Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting of the Board of Education will be called to order. We begin with item number one on the agenda, which is the Act of Reverence and Pledge Allegiance to the Flag. We will have that led by our student rep, Ms. Rosetta Washington.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes. Commissioners should have received these minutes in their weekly packets. We have two sets of minutes, March 27th, 2008, and April 7th, 2008. I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes. Move by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion, comments, questions, or requests to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All of those in favor of accepting the minutes from March 27th and April 7th, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Those minutes are accepted. Commissioner Elliott.
For me, I was not here at either one of those meetings.
So you can abstain?
Yeah, I'd like to abstain. Thank you.
Six yeses, one abstention. Thank you very much. Item number three, speakers addressing an agenda item. We have a list. You will have three minutes. Speakers, I will call you up by twos. Our first speaker is Jessica McCullough. Jessica here?
My name is Jessica McCullough, and I am a fifth grader at School 39. I have an opportunity to be a part of this program, A Horse's Friend. This program has taught me many, many things, like responsibility and taking care of the horses and getting along with others. Though the program, I got the chance to ride and take care of horses and fall in love with horses. Without this program, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't have this chance. If you support A Horse's Friend, other kids will be able to have this great opportunity too. And others, other kids could see what it is like to ride horses. If it wasn't for the principal to pick me, I would be at home watching TV.
Thank you.
President Evans, just one point, just one point. Is this, the Horse's Friend, a resolution that's, that's on for us to decide tonight? I'm trying to figure out where it is.
I don't think, no, I don't think it's, it's in the context of the budget.
Okay, thank you.
Students always address, are always on agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
Students always speak first. Matthew Doward. Matthew Doward here? Matthew Doward will be followed by Jordan Jones.
Hi, my name is Matt Doward, and I'm a student volunteer at the Horse's Friend program. I've met so many new kids and watched some of them come one day and never come back due to a small fee, behavioral issues, and more. This program really teaches kids a lot of new things. As a volunteer, I watch so many kids have a great time with the horses and learning about them. Lots of the kids will be able to continue on learning more if there's financial help instead of being allowed to roam the city streets. Some of the kids can't believe it when they have to get on the bus at the end because when they're having so much fun, it seems like the time flew by. If there was still money, still more money, they could have the extra hour that they had put in. That's a place in particular that we need your help. Unfortunately, the volunteers can't pay to keep the horses and pay for all the costs necessary to have kids come out every Saturday. This program really needs more help, maybe donations, grants, more kids paid for, or sponsors. Because so far, it's been running mainly by the help of the volunteers, but that can't last forever. Thank you, and I love for your help to keep this program running.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Jones, and I'm a volunteer at A Horse's Friend program. I think this program should continue on because kids come out on Saturdays getting away from the streets. Most of the kids that come out, that come out through the barn love being there and would love to keep coming there. I think we need a lot more help keeping the program going because our leader, Matthew Doward, can't keep the program going by himself. It's not like the kids come out for nothing. The kids come out to learn responsibility, teamwork, self-control, and how to take care of horses. And then they ride at the end. Some kids love, love the, some kids, some kids love to come out on Saturdays to be around the horses. And some kids have left the program because their parents didn't or couldn't pay a few dollars for food for them to eat on Saturdays. That's why we need more help for the program to keep going. Thank you. My name is Jordan Jones, and I think this program should continue on.
Alexis, Alexis Vasquez. And Alexis will be followed by Elaine Stewart. Is Alexis here?
Hi, everybody. I'm Alexis Vasquez, and I'm a student at my Horse's Friend program. I've been in this program for a full year, and it's really enjoyable. I've met many new friends in this program, and they've all wanted to come back just to be around all this, this wonderful people and just to be with horses and to learn how to take care of them and responsibility. It's fun to do this and really enjoyable because it's better than being in the city where you could be around the nature and just enjoy being around horses. My kids at school, I've told them about this program, and they really enjoyed it. And now most of my, my friends wanted to come and join me in this program. One of my friends, Eric, he has come in this program too because he really thought it was interesting. This is why I think this program should be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis. Elaine Stewart, is Elaine here? Okay. Natalia Santiago.
I attend School Number Eight, Roberto Clemente. I believe A Horse's Friend program should continue because I've attended this wonderful opportunity for about one year or more. I've gained leadership, teamwork, confidence, animal care, and more. As you can see, I'm very, very inspired by the program. So inspired, I want to become an equestrian or maybe a stable girl. So please keep A Horse's Friend program going. So children who haven't experienced this wonderful opportunity, let's give them one. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, this is from my vice principal. A Horse's Friend program has been a part of our school community for two school years. Students chosen to partake of this initiative during the first year were chosen due to the need of enhance their social skills. The part, the program went well as we received so many requests and to participate. We decided to expand the program to include students with many needs, with special needs and love for animals and nature. Students and parents have expressed their enthusiasm from being chosen to participate in this inconceivable experience. Many students have stated that being able to go out and learn about caring for horses and learning how to ride has been an incredible and rewarding experience. Many recently, I spoke for a student that has been part of the program since last year, and she has shared that the program has helped her to work collaboratively with others, care for animals, and most importantly, heighten her love for horses. She is our school's recruiter. She, she speaks students for the program. She opened, she openly shares her experiences with others about the farm and special events. It is with great pleasure that I share this benefits with continuing, continuing the programs such as this in schools across the district. This program is served as a support incentive, incentive from the school's social community. Sincerely, Kimberly Harris-Battman.
Thank you. We will now move on to item four on the agenda, the superintendent's report. Mr. Bazzard.
Got three items to, to share. One again, we want to congratulate School Number Four for winning the award for closing the achievement gap. Second, Alan Williams, leave no relations. A senior at School of the Arts tonight is being awarded the Princeton Prize in Race Relations from the Alumni Council of Princeton University. The award honors students who are working to increase understanding of mutual respect among all races and are models for others to improve, in improving race relations. Alan is this year's recipient of the $1,000 award for Monroe County. He's receiving the honor as we speak at the Country Club of Rochester. So our congratulation goes out to Alan at School of the Arts. Second, the school itself, School of the Arts is being recognized tomorrow at 11:30 by, by our own Mayor Duffy. Today I received a letter from Epic, and I'd like to read pieces of it and give copies of the entire letter to our commissioners. It comes from Vito Barello, president of Epic. And if you're not familiar with Epic, Epic stands for Every Person Influences Children. Again, I'll just read excerpts. Kathy Little, Epic's Rochester Pick Coordinator, coordinated a tour of the facility and meeting of the Hart Street Center with parental involvement and customer service staff. I must tell you that your building dedicated to parents is extremely impressive, and I believe the best in the state. The staff team supported by, supporting this effort led by Nicole Cracker is even more impressive. As someone who has spent the past 12 years of my career advocating for and supporting the needs of parents, I was inspired by your staff's exceptional competence and passion for this work. I enjoyed hearing about Rochester's comprehensive effort to support the involvement and encouragement of parents. And of course, he goes down and highlights Dwight Fowler, Latasha Johnson, Alberto Moss, Ken Davis, and Iris Estiver. So we welcome this wonderful letter and give congratulations to the staff at Hart Street for their support of our parents in our community. The last piece I'd like to, to discuss quickly. We've seen the, the work we want to do for, for next year, beginning the reform efforts in the district. The discussion of the Dream Schools. If you're not familiar with the Dream Schools concept, we're looking to put about six schools in our district in this cohort we're calling the Dream Schools. One second. You're getting two documents. One is an executive summary, the other one, actual data from the individual schools chosen. If you're familiar with the Chancellors District in New York City and some of the work being done right now by Superintendent Williams in Buffalo and the work of Arlene Ackerman in San Francisco, what she called the Star Schools in, in San Francisco, you may be familiar with some of the great results that have been gotten from some of these, these clusters. So in essence, we're taking six schools and popping a tremendous amount of resources, talent, human resources, dollar resources, to make sure they improve. And we're looking to get traction within a year and within three years to see substantial growth. The goal is to reduce the opportunity gap and transform these low, these six low-performing schools into the most improved schools in the district. Three fundamental goals in the project. One is to transform the schools into safe places with high expectations, rigorous standards, meaningful teaching and learning and student success. Two, part of the work also involves building our capacity here in this building to support schools that struggle and to make sure that there is coordinated effort around these schools. And three, of course, to develop a cadre of school leadership teams who will conduct the school transformation endeavor in each of these targeted schools. The project is going to be led by our cluster leaders, our chief of schools, as well as Lou Smith, who is, I guess, an expert in the school transformation process, formerly at Fordham University, right now works in a number of different places around, around the country. Michelle Hancock, I believe, when she was a principal, was part of the school transformation program, and she's highlighted one of chapters of this book, one of our schools right here in our city. So Lou Smith will be guiding us through this work, of course, being modeled after the Chancellors District in New York City and the Star Schools in San Francisco. The schools were chosen from a rigorous analysis, objective data, as well as looking at some of the qualitative work going on in these schools. We looked at student achievement data, especially subgroup or cohort information, retention, how many kids get left back each, each year, what models have been implemented in these schools, reform models, that is, number of suspensions, how long the principal's been there, graduation rate, looking at multi-year, multi-cohort graduation rate, and the dropout rate. The schools that we chose based on this, and again, we argued quite a bit behind doors, closed doors, talking about this, reviewing data, seeing which schools will position best for us to show the kinds of improvement we want to show in, in struggling schools. We chose School Number Eight, School Forty-Five, Franklin Finance, Franklin Global, Thomas Jefferson, and Wilson Foundation. All the secondary schools listed are sir schools identified by the state as performing in the bottom 5%. And the two elementaries that we chose are not sir, but they both are cited by NCLB as being schools in great need of improvement. So those schools have been chosen for the work. And the core elements of the program include a number of different things highlighted in, on page two. One, of course, we're going to make sure we have an executive coach, perhaps a retired principal, working for one per two schools. People who have done this work have done great work with principals to coach them to a transformation process. A coherent set of interventions, including extended day, extended year, extended scheduling to make sure that we infuse the kinds of literacy and mathematics to make sure our kids are performing. An intense focus on instruction, required core curricula, with benchmark assessments built in to, to, to what they do on a regular basis. On-site staff development, because we know job-embedded PD, professional development is the way to go. So each of these schools will have at least one English Language Arts coach and one mathematics coach to make sure we're focusing on the literacy and mathematics needs of our students. A data steward will be also working with a number of these schools. And the goal here is to make sure that you have someone who understands how to query data, look at it, sit with inquiry teams, and, and show these educators how to use the, the information, the data, the, the entry information to inform what teachers do on a regular basis in these, in these schools. Targeted class size reduction, we didn't say class size reduction across the board, but to look at critical areas in the school, we need to make sure that the ratio of students to teachers is as small as possible. And it goes on, including the affective needs, the, the guidance support, as well as technology, and again, tremendous amount of professional development led by our people here, as well as Dr. Lou Smith from the Transformation Project at Fordham University. Again, it's outlined, all of this is outlined here on the two-page executive summary. And if you look at the second page, you begin to see the data, that, some of the data we looked at to identify the schools. Again, we looked at the entire continuum, every school in the district, and we had a cut score, then we began from there to pick the, the six schools that would be part of the project beginning this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, the superintendent touched on three, three items in his report. Mentioned a young man from Sota Epic or Dream Schools. Questions related to those items that he mentioned in his superintendent's report? Commissioner White?
No, I was saying bless you or something.
Bless you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Elliott.
Is there a district in this country that is having excellent success? I mean, are there dream school districts in the nation?
The answer is yes. While all of us across the country in urban education struggle with the same kinds of issues, there are districts that have won prizes for being the best in the country. In fact, the Broad Foundation, every single year publishes, or at least identifies-
Let me just qualify that, Mr. Superintendent, urban school district.
Yes, urban school districts. The Broad Foundation, if you look at the Broad Prize, which is given to districts across the country, a million dollars in prizes goes to only urban schools that have a minimum amount of poverty. I believe 60% is the cutoff, and these districts owe at least 20,000. If you look, Long Beach, California's won the prize, and it's been a finalist every year since the prize was announced. Garden Grove, Aldine, Texas, Boston won it two years ago, New York City last year. So we have a number of districts across the country we can find this. Our own Marilyn Patterson and the team went to Texas, help me, Grand Prairie, thank you, to look at an exemplary district doing wonderful things with similar kinds of issues that they face.
What was the demographic makeup of those schools? And let me just ask it pointedly. Were those schools have a predominantly African-American student population?
There, some of, most of our urban districts across the country are either predominantly African-American and/or Latino. If you look at Garden Grove, they're 90% Mexican-American. In Grand Prairie, Marilyn?
Predominantly Hispanic and then African-American and predominantly both those communities.
Yeah. If you look at even New York City and Boston, the majority of the students there are African-American and Latino.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Commissioner Powell.
I was going to bring this up under a point of personal prerogative, but it does relate to the Epic acknowledgement. We have a class of parents with us, Parent Leadership Academy, and Latasha Johnson, and I thought Ken Davis was here too. Could you stand up, please? Leading the Parent Leadership Academy. If there are other staff members, I just didn't catch your faces. And could the, could my classmates with the Parent Leadership Academy please stand and be acknowledged? They're a little over-
You can stay, you can stay standing.
Just an example of what our parent, our, our parent outreach is actually doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you. The only thing I would add is that I wish the Dream Schools process much success. Often we hear from schools that are struggling that they sometimes feel as though they will be able to do better if more resources were targeted towards them, and it looks like this may be a solution to that. So thank you.
If I, let me just add one, one point. I'm talking to Arlene Ackerman from, from San Francisco, who's now in Philadelphia. She's told me that the schools, once they enter this project, they very seldom want to leave because the amount of support they get is so great that once they achieve and they have to move out of the star Dream Schools concept, they actually complain about having to leave the program.
Thank you. We will now move on to item number five, board reports. We're going to begin with our student representatives' report. Ms. Washington, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir.
Proceed.
Good evening. I am first going to start with our process with the students at School Number Twenty-Two Reach Program, which are, we are still mentoring our students at School Number Twenty-Two. We have about 17 students. We are mentors to them. We also serve as role models to them. We keep in contact with them via email, telephone, and schedule dates. Right now, we have several seniors in Student Leadership Congress. Therefore, with our little ones, they are following our high school graduation process right now. So to have a child literally right by you for a scholarship interview or to have a child by you knowing that it's hard to pick out what college you want to go to, already having sixth graders thinking about this stuff, already having sixth graders think about what they want their major to be, what they're focusing on, is very important to all of us. So our next project will be to plan something with them towards the end of the year to like, I want to say, because when we leave, we don't just want to stop connection with them because we really have made a strong bond with these children, and they really do look up to us. They are like family to us, literally. I really do mean that. My little sister calls me like literally every day. And when other people are at my house and they say, "Who is it?" And I say, "My little sister." They say, "We know you don't have a little sister." And they're my family, and I have to explain this to them. So they've been following us through that high school process, and one of our main focuses was to help them with their transition to high school. So that's the School Number Twenty-Two Reach Program. We wanted to do a PSA, a public service announcement with them, but I actually put that on the, well, my committee and I, Congress, have put that on the back burner right now. That's like our last priority because we really want to focus on the time spent with them because we have so many seniors right now in the Student Leadership Congress. So we kind of set that aside. But I will keep the scripts, and hopefully, if we don't get to it this year, I will have those scripts forward to the SOC of next year. Okay. Our next community service project for Student Leadership Congress hopefully will be the Mayor Duffy's Clean Suite, of course. Very popular, time for us to get out, all get together. It's on the Saturdays, so we most likely are going to be doing that. And I feel as though I have to touch on A Horse's Friend. That sounds like a wonderful program. I have actually had the chance to groom horses before and ride horses, and for so many of us to be minorities in the Rochester City School District, this is using the term outside the box. We are not used to riding horses or being in that type of environment. And if you want to take it one step further, this experience might actually give them that extra urge, that extra incentive to want to go to college and to want to earn a degree, to eventually one day own a house and that much land to have those horses or to have that ranch. So, so I thought that was very important. I mean, the young ones, they mentioned the word volunteer. It's hard enough to get high schoolers to want to volunteer for community service, and here they are on Saturdays when they could be doing plenty of the other things in Rochester, and they're out on their Saturdays grooming horses, and that's incredible. I think it is. He even mentioned how, you know, the parents are in poverty, and this is, you know, this is giving their parents time off to do whatever, maybe go get that job or maybe go do as they need because they're away from their kids on that Saturday. So I just think that's a great program. I wish you the best of luck on that. Maybe one day I can go before I go to school and ride the horse, so maybe. And then, sorry, I'm going. She mentioned she wanted to be a quest, how do you say it?
An equestrian.
Equestrian? That is not an occupation that I've ever heard of. So that, that just goes to show how her outlook and her mindset right now, like where it's going. She didn't say, "I want to be a doctor, I want to be a lawyer." She didn't go for a regular term. She went for something way out there. I bet you if you asked any other kids or any other high schoolers what that is, they would have no idea. They're probably occupation, that's all I knew. So congratulations to you for being the word I can't pronounce, but congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
President Evans, is there, can I interject on, on Commissioner Washington's report? Well, actually, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that Commissioner Washington invited me to Charlotte and gave me a, although I've been there a number of times, gave me a tour, and I just appreciate her role at Charlotte High School and also her role on the board. I can just envision her, you know, somewhere down the line, being in an elected member of this body or some other body because she has such passion for what she does and for ensuring that students are succeeding, you know, along with herself. So I just wanted to commend Commissioner Washington on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But also, also one, one point, that if you look back at the history of cowboys and horses, the whole term, we were there.
Commissioner Williams.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, I have two reports tonight. The first is on the Audit Committee. We met on Thursday, April 3rd, and we had, there are four points that we discussed during the meeting. The first one was the interministerial RFP between the city and the, and the district for a new auditor. And you have before you tonight in your packet, a, we're seeking approval of Resolution 649 to have Reed Maxican Patagla hired as the new CAFER auditor. The second thing that we, second point that we covered was, we received an operations update on the work that was being performed by the Office of the Auditor General. The third thing was that we discussed the decision, the process to obtain a, for lack of a better term, a financial expert. And this expert is a non-salary position to the board. And this expert is a non-salary position to the board, which would provide additional financial expertise to the Audit Committee. And I'm asking all board members to provide names of candidates that you would want to have us consider as this additional resource on the board itself. And the last thing is that our next Audit Committee meeting will be scheduled pending the final approval of the new CAFR auditor. I should also add that the city approved the auditor in their last.
City council meeting?
City council meeting, about a week ago.
Thank you. Questions for Commissioner Williams? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Commissioner Powell and Finance.
One.
Oh, I'm sorry. And also, Commissioner Williams was our representative at the Council of Great City Schools, so I'm going to ask him to also deliver a report on that. Thank you.
And I'll give just a short report. On May, well, I'm sorry, from March 15th to 18th, I attended the Legislative and Policy Conference of the Council of Great City Schools, which was held in Washington, D.C. The focus of the conference itself was primarily on the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind. And the council as a body developed an extensive list of recommendations for reauthorizing and strengthening No Child Left Behind. And if any of you would like to see a list of those recommendations, I have it. Some of the highlights of the conference was, there was a speech by Margaret Spelling, the Secretary of Education, as well as by John Sarbanes, who is the congressman from The other highlights of the conference really was the sort of networking that I engaged in along with other school board members from across the country, especially from districts in Buffalo and Syracuse. I had a chance to meet most of the other school board members there, and we had a chance to compare notes in terms of the kinds of issues that they were encountering in their districts, as well as the kinds of things that they were doing to overcome some of the issues that we all face. And the last thing that we did, that I did, and probably the most significant, was along with Linda Staggles and Hazel Washington, we lobbied our congressional representatives. We spent time with both Senator Chuck Schumer's office, Hillary Clinton's office, as well as Louis Slaughter's office, meeting their staff and really letting them know the kinds of things that we as a district were important to us and what we wanted their support on. And I'd like to thank both Linda Staggles and Hazel Washington for coming. I mean, Hazel spent her birthday at the conference, which was quite something to give up, and Linda really did an outstanding job in introducing both Hazel and me to the rest of the congressional staff, again, at Hillary Clinton's office, Senator Schumer's office, and Louis Slaughter's office. Again, thanks to both of them.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for representing us. The Council of Great City Schools is an invaluable organization for urban school districts. They really help us set an agenda around areas in particular like No Child Left Behind, and I thank you for representing us. Thank you. Commissioner Powell and the Finance Committee.
Before I start my Finance Committee, and so I don't forget, I represent Rochester at the State Commissioner of Education's Advisory Board, and I will be going to Albany on May 1st. And later in May, we'll be hosting our annual Big Five Annual Meeting. I'm not sure what the date is, but I'll keep you all posted on that. The Finance Committee report, we met Thursday, the 17th. We reviewed the March financial reports, and those financial reports include budget amendments that are the product of increase in grant revenues. I would ask, I ask for, or I move that we approve the monthly financial reports.
So moved.
It's been moved, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any questions on the monthly financial reports? I'll call the question on approving the monthly financial reports. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, our monthly financial reports are approved. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Okay. We also had budget amendments tied to that. I believe those are Resolutions 641 and 642, one being our operating funds and the other being our grant funds. We have, the Finance Committee approved for advancement to the full board a number of capital improvement projects that would start this summer. Those are represented by Resolutions 627 through 636. We have a couple of procurement contracts, Resolutions Number 637 through 639, and a couple of miscellaneous, 653s through 654. Those all were approved by the Finance Committee to be advanced to the board with our recommendations. Our next meetings, we do have another budget deliberation session next Monday at 6:00 PM. That's a committee of the whole. We'll be discussing the program-based budgeting section of the budget book and the capital improvement plan. Then we will be meeting to adopt the proposed budget on May 8th, and our next regularly scheduled Finance Committee meeting will be on May 15th.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you.
And also, thank you for shepherding this budget process yet again this year. Lot of work, and we appreciate it.
Well, not much more work than you all have to put in.
Right.
It's every, it's a.
Long, long.
Hands-on deck of missions.
Long meetings. When I'm on time, long meetings. Commissioner White, the QA and also a report from the National School Boards Association.
The Quality Assurance Committee met on Thursday, I'm sorry, the Quality Assurance Committee did not meet on Thursday, April 10th as scheduled. We had a lack of a quorum. However, rest assured, we'll meet again on Tuesday, May 8th at 5:30 PM. At that meeting, we will discuss changing the committee's name. We will also discuss Reed 180. Thirdly, we will discuss instruction management system, the curriculum developer, I'm really curious as to what that's about, the August Leadership Institute, and future QA meeting dates. As President Evans indicated, I attended the National School Boards Association Conference in Florida. I also happened to bump in on more than one occasion to Commissioner Elliott while we were there. It was a good conference. I have distributed, thanks to Joanne, a copy, a written copy of my report, as well as some attachments that included different documents that I received while I was in Florida. So I would encourage my colleagues to take a look at that stuff, because it's really good stuff that we got and we learned in Florida. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Elliott and the Board Governance Committee.
The Board Governance Committee met on April 14th, and we also met on April 22nd. We are, on the April 14th date, we talked about the board's self-evaluation, the evaluation tool for the superintendent. We talked about a board consultant to help us in terms of our board organization, the date for a board retreat. We also had an opportunity with our new commissioners, Campos and Williams, the Board Governance Committee has been providing orientation sessions for our new commissioners. As such, we also had a visit from, and will be having visits from the unions. We were pleased to have at the April 14th, at one of the sessions, I can't remember the date, Adam Abansky, who attended that meeting, and out of that session, and I'm proud to report, that we talked about having a gathering with the unions, with the school board, as well as with the district. And as I've said to Adam, and as you probably have heard me say in the past, it appears that it has been the unions who've been driving the educational agenda for our district. And it also appears that even, you know, it is with the unions that there's been some difficulty. But one of the things I also recognize, that the only way you have strong unions is that you have weak management. And so this brings us an opportunity to work with collectively the unions, the school board, and the district in a collaborative way so that we can come up together with the type of plan that would generate academic success for our children. And I'm very proud that we're going to look at a date sometime in August if we can to make that happen so that we can come together and look at each person's, each group's perspective of, you know, what we are about in terms of educating our children. We also have some other items that we're going to be talking about at our board retreat that we hope to have scheduled for sometime next month. We also had a meeting, as I mentioned, on April 22nd to discuss our board consultant and President Evans and members of the board. We have before you that the Board Governance Committee is recommending a Resolution Number 651 for payment for Scott Associates. And that concludes the Board Governance report. But let me just also report, I'm glad that we are having opportunities to report on these conferences that we attend. In particular, there was a workshop, a Cube Institute's workshop that I attended on gang intervention. One of the things that struck me, now this may be old hat to others, but it struck me in terms of the sophistication of gangs. We were informed that gang members, actually now, the way we were sitting there in that session for a workshop, there are gang members who are actually sitting in sessions similar to what we're sitting in and studying Steve Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. I mean, this stuff is scary. And so they also talked, and I won't get into it because it's just too hard to get into some of the initiations that they do. But I bring that up because these are some of the issues that are going on in our community that our young people are dealing with. I mean, this is serious stuff. And it used to be where, you know, once you reached a certain age in gangs, you got out of the gangs primarily. What we're told is that these people who are thirty and forty are remaining in these gangs longer. So, you know, it may, like I said, it may be old hat to some of you, but I mean, it just struck me that we've got some serious issues in our young people. President Evans, it's having to deal with some issues on our street that many of us have no clue about. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Oh, one other thing, we also, were you there? We also heard Sidney Portier speak. There are probably about eight thousand people, ten thousand people in there, and he really talked about the values that his mother and his father instilled in him. I mean, he had his own struggles, as we all do, you know, once he got on his own, but he's eighty-one years old, like eighty-two years old now, looks very good, and is now looking back, I didn't mean it that way. But is now looking back on his life and really paying homage to his parents in his development. Thank you.
Commissioner Campos and the Community and Intergovernmental Relations.
Community and Intergovernmental Relations will meet on Thursday, May 1st, and we plan to discuss having a joint session with City Council to discuss issues relevant to both bodies, and we'll flesh out the parameters and preliminary specifics at our meeting on May 1st. And if anyone has any suggestions or input to share, please advise myself, Commissioner Brennan, or our new committee member, Commissioner White. Also, CIGR also requested that a bylaw amendment be considered by the Policy Committee to add student recognition to the monthly order of business, and Policy chose not to forward this recommendation to the full board. And as chair, with the support of my committee, I'll raise the issue again tonight under new business. CIGR considered this amendment as part of its role as working with the community and community engagement. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Commissioner Brennan and the Policy Committee.
Thanks, Malik. Policy Committee met on Tuesday, April 15th. We voted to move two items forward for consideration this evening under new business, and this will allow them to be voted on and discussed for possible adoption at the May business meeting. Based on our conversation this evening, Policy may convene before the May business meeting to continue discussion. Information regarding Policies 5153, Parent Preference, Man's Choice, and 5100 attendance were distributed to the full board on April 11th. We set a public hearing date on the 2008-2009 Code of Conduct for Monday, May 12th at 6:00 PM. At that meeting, we will gather additional input into how the code should be revised. School-based planning team members and union representatives have been contacted regarding input. We anticipate moving a revised Code of Conduct forward for consideration at the June business meeting. The amendment proposed by Commissioner White to Policy, 6725, the responsible bidder amendment, was referred to our legal department and Commissioner White for minor clarification. We anticipate moving forward on that promptly, and appreciate Commissioner White's work in this matter and his contributions to the discussion. Two recommended changes to board bylaws, one of which was just referenced. A committee name change and amendment to the order of business to include student recognition at the beginning of our meetings were not forwarded to the committee. There is, I think, some question among some members about whether or not it's necessary. A change in the order of business we see as the purview of the Board Governance Committee, so that could be attended that way, and that's the only reason that that was not forwarded. And I think the matter of the name change will probably come up later. The Policy Committee will also gather input for the public, from the public regarding the parent involvement in school-based planning policies. At 6:00 PM Wednesday, May 14th, in a formal public hearing, as distinguished from the more informal discussion that I held on May 12th, we're going to be making extra efforts to publicize that hearing, and we're continuing to reach out with parents who have expressed concern and interest in those issues and doing so directly. That concludes the report.
Thank you. Questions for Commissioner Brennan on his report?
I have a very brief report. The flag outside Central Office was flown at half-staff on April 11th in memory of Craig Bennett, Ben Arp, a former social studies and firefighter trainee teacher at East High School. And again, our sympathies are with Mr. Bennett's family. I know that he was very much well-beloved over at East High School. Also, a group of students and staff at the University of Rochester conducted their first annual spring rock festival on Saturday. Proceeds will benefit the Wilson Commencement Music Program, and we look forward to the results of this partnership. School 33, John James Audubon, will conduct its author's fair May 1st from 4:00 to 5:30 and is looking for guest readers. This is a great opportunity to support literacy. There will be information about volunteering to read a story or two to the group of students in your Friday packet. And so everyone knows, Commissioner Powell is our liaison to School 33. And lastly, once again, Commissioner Powell mentioned earlier, our participants that are here from the parent university, once again, welcome. We're glad to have you at the board meeting. No. We will move on to item, we will move on to resolutions, consideration is Resolutions 2007 and 2008. We'll start with Human Resources Resolutions, Resolutions 600 through 626. I'll entertain a motion to move these resolutions.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Campos. Questions around Human Resources Resolution 600 through 626?
Yes, President Evans.
Commissioner Elliott.
Question reference to Resolution 6 on 1. On what grounds do we extend probationary periods?
Mr. Superintendent?
Ms. Chafita, would you like to? First, based on the recommendation of the principal or supervisor. And it's fairly routine when somebody has missed a block of time due to illness, medical leave, whatever, that we extend, and that was the case here, that we extend the probationary period so that we have the number of months to actually observe performance that we're supposed to have under the three-year rule.
And if I may ask one more question in reference to that. And so on what grounds do we terminate personnel during that probationary period?
That's a good question. We take into account, you know, again, we look to the principal to make the recommendation, and a principal would look at many factors. We would review prior observations and evaluations of a teacher in particular, or if an administrator. We would look at the evaluations of the supervisor. We would look at the evaluations of the supervisor. And we would weigh it heavily on the principal's observations, notations, possible discipline, depending on, you know, well, I think that would be it, primarily the principal's observations and evaluations of either another administrator or of a teacher.
So it's primarily, it's a subjective determination?
You know, there are objective measures that you can use to look at both teacher and administrator performance. You can certainly collect data about how the classroom is doing, how the students are doing. As you know, this is a very sensitive issue across New York State. We certainly don't make tenure recommendations, particularly for principals or teachers, based solely on test score information. But I do think it's a fair judgment for a principal to look at whether or not the students are growing under the direction of a classroom teacher in particular. A little more difficult with an administrator. Obviously, you don't have that direct connection to students when you're evaluating an administrator for tenure. But you can certainly evaluate effectiveness on the job, and there are many ways to do that. You know, whether or not the person is, seems to have the knowledge that they need to function in their job, whether or not they are completing projects that are assigned, if in fact, part of their responsibility is to evaluate other staff, are they completing their evaluations on time? Are they of good quality? There are many aspects to look at.
And if I just may ask two more questions on this issue, then I'm done with this. Because I get questions from teachers who have been in this position and now terminated. So my first question is, if, and I just had one this week, where a teacher was terminated, has gone to another organization, but also has gotten further education, may want to come back, is there an opportunity that it may not have worked out for him during that period? But does he have an opportunity to return, given that, you know, based on what the recommendations may have been, that he's improved in those areas?
Right.
Is there an opportunity for that?
Right. We would never say, we would never say that a person is barred from applying for reemployment with the district. We can't say that. You know, in terms of the decision-making process, when it comes to hiring teachers, for example, again, we would rely heavily on a principal's recommendation in the hiring process. But you're asking a question that frankly, we haven't discussed with the superintendent, and he may have his own views on that, too, which we haven't fleshed out yet. It's a good question, though.
And I forgot my other question, so I'll ask it.
I'll be there if it comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions on Resolutions 600 through 626? Any other questions on Human Resources Resolution?
Yes, I do, President Evans. One of my concerns is, and I think I've mentioned this in previous meetings, is we get the resolutions to approve after the fact. And that concerns me. If you go through the resolutions, for example, if you look at Resolution 616, this person's specific dates to work is 3/18 to 4/29. I mean, this person has already started. And when you look at many of the other resolutions, and most of the resolutions that I'll be voting on, no tonight in this section, has to do with the fact that I'm asking to vote on these resolutions after the fact. And my conscience just is not going to allow me to do that. We have got to, Superintendent Bizard, you know, have a more efficient way to have these resolutions brought to us in a timely manner. I'm just not, I'm voting no on these resolutions that are after the fact. You know, don't ask me to vote on something when you've already hired them. I mean, it almost says that, you know, it dismisses and disrespects the authority of this board.
Thank you. Any other, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to respond?
Ms. Hancock, is there any reason why you want to address for six? This is...
Well, that's just an example. She doesn't have to address it, Mr. Superintendent.
I would note...
It's all throughout the resolutions.
At times, there are legitimate reasons why these things happen.
Right.
I would note that this is clearly, this particular resolution you identified, Resolution 616, clearly says it's an amendment, and the period has not expired yet.
Thank you. Mr. President. Yes, Commissioner White?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just wanted to recognize the good work of Superintendent Bizard, his staff specifically, Marilyn Patterson Grant, Michelle Hancock, Paul Lampy, and Nyree Strong for Resolution 614. It's located on page 35. That particular resolution calls for the creation of a curriculum document that provides a plan to teach United States history from the perspective of the African-American community in Rochester. This is a laudable, yeah, it's on page 35, it's Resolution 614. This is a laudable effort, and I am encouraged by this development. So thank you, Superintendent Bizard, and thanks to your staff for this important and significant effort.
Thank you. Any other, before I call the question on Resolution 600 through 626?
President Evans, I want to make an amendment to the resolution with regard to, and if you just bear with me for a second, the Resolution 608. I'd like to vote yes on the parental leave absence for Deborah Frenzo, because that doesn't start until May 5th. So I'd like to make a motion that we split that up into a resolution, make that Resolution 608B or A.
Commissioner Elliott has made an amendment to the motion that is currently on the floor to split Resolution 608 up to make it A and B. Is there a second to Commissioner Elliott's motion that is on the floor?
Well, second, so that she can make her appropriate vote.
Seconded by Commissioner White. I'll call the question on that amendment to that motion. All those in favor of splitting up 608, making it A and B, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I oppose. I don't see why we should punish individual employees for the timeliness of documents. This is all parental leave, and parents need to be able to take care of their families.
I vote no also on that. So, but the ayes have it, 5-2.
President Evans?
4-3.
Okay, 4-3.
I'll be voting no, too.
In favor?
It's 4-3 with abstentions by Commissioner Williams, Powell, and myself. But we will split that up, 608 through 608A and B.
And also, President Evans, for Resolution 609, I'd also like to make a motion that we separate that. Again, we have one of our personnel, Andrea Clark, who starts May 9th. I'd like to vote yes on that, but I'd like to vote no on the other family leave acts. And let me just point out, unless, you can tell me if I'm out of order here, but this is not that I have a problem with them taking it. What I do have a problem with is we not getting it in time enough to vote either way on these resolutions.
Point of personal privilege?
Yeah, point of personal privilege, but before you give your point of personal, go ahead, your point of personal privilege. Go ahead.
My concern is that this is a Family Medical Leave Act. Women going out on maternity leave, they cannot give advance notice with precise dates. You have an anticipated due date, but babies don't come on schedule. They come when they're coming, and you can only give medical leave notice after the baby is born and not before.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think there's a little bit of confusion here. My vote is simply to allow Commissioner Elliott to cast her vote as she deems appropriate. There is a motion to separate these resolutions so she can vote yes for certain...
And I find the motion frivolous.
Well, okay, that may be your opinion, but she is entitled to cast her vote according to her conscience. So I'm voting so that she can separate these resolutions and vote her conscience. Whether we think it's frivolous or not is not the point. The point is she ought to be able to cast her vote as she deems appropriate. I support that. I also support these resolutions, and I want the record to be clear, that I support, of course, these resolutions and these employees' entitlement to what is their lawful entitlement to Family Medical Leave Act. So I just want the record to be clear.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So there's currently a motion, another amendment to the motion on the floor by Commissioner Elliott to separate, can you restate?
Yeah, to separate the employee Andrea Clark into Resolution 609A and the other resolutions, 609B, so that I can vote in favor of the one that we have been presented with in a timely fashion. And again, if I'm out of order, please say so, President Evans. This is not in reference to whether or not I believe they should take it, doesn't have anything to do with the fact that it's family, you know, that it is a family medical leave. What it has to do with is process, and we're not getting these resolutions in a timely fashion.
Well, I would, but I would note for the record that we are giving the resolutions three weeks early, which results in a shorter time for certain things, such as the Family Medical Leave Act. So the reason why it's shorter is not an administration issue, it's our issue, because we moved, we wanted to have more time to review packets, so I would make that point.
All right, fine, but here...
But there is a motion on the floor, and I want to move on with your motion, which is to separate those two resolutions. Commissioner Elliott has made that motion. Is there a second to her motion to separate those?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, just clear, this is simply to separate the motion, not to vote the resolutions down.
Right, to separate them.
Okay.
Okay, the ayes have it, 4-3, to separate it again. We're still on our original motion with Human Resources Resolution 600 through 626. Any other comments, questions, or concerns on Resolutions 600 through 626?
I would just point out, President Evans, you know, when you made the statement that some of these resolutions are given, are just given to us three weeks in advance, or, I mean, I may have your statement wrong of what you just made, but I'd like to point out, when you look at Resolution 605, for example, in reference to substitute teachers, the date of that is January 9th, 2008. That's way beyond three weeks. And there are a number of those similar resolutions, and that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay, we have, we're going to call the question on these resolutions, being that we separated them. I am going to do a roll call vote on Resolutions 600 through 626. And this includes Resolution 608A and B and Resolution 609A and B. Our student rep has not voted on Human Resources Resolution, so we will start with Commissioner Williams. How do you vote on Resolutions 600 through 626?
Vote yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes to all.
I vote yes to all. Commissioner White?
Yes to all.
Commissioner Elliott?
My vote, I have no votes on 603, 606, 612, 614, 616. Let me just go back to 608. If we're terming B, the ones that are out of date, then I vote no on that, 608B, and 609B, I vote no on. 612, 614, 616, 617, 618, 619, 620, 621, 622, 625, and 626. Those are no votes.
Madam clerk, have you captured that?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan, how do you vote?
Yes to all.
Thank you. We will now move on to Resolution 627 through 636, Educational Facilities. Our student rep, what is your advisory vote on Resolution 627 through 636?
636.
627 through 636?
Aye.
Thank you. Our entertain a motion to approve Resolution 627 through 636.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Any questions, comments, or discussions around Resolution 627 through 636? Much of these have gone through the Finance Committee.
These would all be the new builds for the CIP for the summer. I don't think there are any, there may be a couple of final payments in that batch.
I will call the question. All those in favor of Resolution 627 through 636, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nos on 627 through 636? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, 627 through 636 passes. We will now move on to Resolution 637 through 639. Resolution 637 through 639 are procurement and supply resolutions. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 637 through 639.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Questions on Resolutions 637 through 639? Commissioner Elliott?
Thank you. And I don't, in reference to 642, just, and I may, it may be, I put my notes on the latest edition that we were sent, so I'm not really looking at the ones that we were just given.
You said 642?
Yes.
Yeah, we're not there yet, we're still on 637 through 639.
All right, my, I'm, thank you. Okay.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns on 637 through 639? Our student rep, what's your advisory vote?
Aye.
All those in favor of Resolution 637 through 639 indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Those no? Any nos? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We'll move on to Resolutions 640 through 642, which are budget and finance. Is there a motion to approve?
Some more.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Elliott, you had something on 642?
Yeah, just in terms of the writing of the resolution, the second line was where it notes grant fund to $97,140,320. Do we insert, can we insert what that previous number was just for the record, so that when we publish this information online publicly, we know what that previous grant fund amount was?
I don't...
Resolution 642?
641. 641 or 42?
642.
642.
Right.
Okay.
Second line.
Mm-hmm.
Grant, not the general fund unchanged, but grant fund, and it says grant fund to $97 million.
Okay, yes.
If one looks at the resolution immediately above it, you can see the change, so it's a simple matter of subtraction to determine what the previous number was.
Yeah, but can we note that in the resolution, can I, I'd like to make an amendment that we insert what that previous dollar amount was, so that it's clear that we are clear about, you know, for our public official records, what that number was?
So what would you like to amend?
Whatever that amount was. I guess I need to know what that amount was. I don't remember what the amount of the grant fund line item was. Now it's being increased to $97 million?
And it's an overall increase of 239,306? All right, we can get our math whizzes out here. 97,140,320 minus 239 minus 306, what does that come up to?
But is that, is that just a math change, or is it the fact that we had a dollar amount there previously?
I think it's just the math, yeah, because, and overall, the resolve that the Board of Education does hereby amend the grant fund 2007, 2008 to $97,140,320, an overall increase of 239.06. I wasn't a math whiz, but I think if we subtract 97,140,320 minus 239,306, wouldn't that...
Yeah, so why can't we put that, just put that number in there?
Would that be the previous?
Yeah. 96, well, 96,9.
Yeah, why can't we just, you know, amend that to put that number in there, what it was?
So Commissioner Williams is adding up on his calculator. What was that previous number?
It was, bear with me.
I think we actually have a motion.
Yeah, we do, to amend it, yes.
Yeah, I did make a motion.
But I want to, I want to make sure we get the number, so that way you can amend it with the number.
Okay.
While he's doing the math, could I ask a question? Why didn't this come up in the Finance Committee?
Hold on, one second. Commissioner Powell, I'm going to let Commissioner Williams give the numbers, so that way Commissioner Elliott can make her amendment, or propose her amendment.
96 million, 901,14, 96, 901,014.
So Commissioner Elliott, that previous number would be 96,901,014.
Yeah, so that's my motion, that we amend that resolution... Yeah, so that's my motion, that we amend that resolution to include that number.
Okay, Mr., we double-checked the math, Mr. CFO, is that correct? Okay. So Commissioner Elliott is, is making an amendment to Resolution six forty-one to state which was a previous amount of ninety-six million nine hundred and one thousand fourteen dollars. Is there a second to her motion, to her amendment on the motion that's on the floor?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. All those in favor, please say, or any discussion on that? Well, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that, that is amended, Resolution six forty-one. Any other questions, comments, or concerns around Resolution six forty through six forty-two?
I would, if, if I may, in reference to this, you know, I've heard some snickering and what have you, but I take this role very seriously. We have the State Controller's Office in here. This is nothing to laugh about, and we need to be real serious about that. We remember just what happened out in Greece. And so we need to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. I don't take this lightly. I've been elected by a body to put me here to make sure we're doing our due diligence. So I just want to make sure that you all are aware that this is not a, a issue to be taken lightly.
Thanks. Point of order, Commissioner Powell?
Never mind, we haven't voted yet, so.
Okay, thanks. Any, any other, any other comments surrounding Resolution six forty through six forty-two? Hearing that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Resolutions six forty through six forty-two, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Any nos? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, six, seven, zero. We'll now move on to Resolutions six forty-three and six, six forty-three through six fifty-four, which are others.
President Evans?
Uh, yes.
Motion to separate six forty-nine and six fifty-one.
Motion to separate six forty-nine and also six?
Fifty-one.
Six fifty-one. Okay, is there a?
What numbers?
Six forty-nine through six fifty-one?
Not true, not true. Six forty-nine and, but not true.
And six fifty-one. Six forty-nine and sixty-one, six fifty-one, we will vote on six forty-nine through six fifty-one separately. You guys are keeping me on my toes tonight. All those in favor of separating Resolutions six forty-nine through six fifty-one?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Just a question, do, do I ask while we are separating, or we just vote?
We just go straight to it.
Okay.
There'll be an opportunity to discuss these resolutions specifically. By the way, it's and six fifty-one, right? Not true.
Six forty-nine and six fifty-one, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, back to the original motion. Any questions, comments, or concerns around Resolutions six forty-three through six fifty-four?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner White?
Yes, with respect to Resolution six forty-nine, first of all, I want to thank our Auditor General, Anissa.
Beg your pardon, that's the one that was separated.
Oh, I, I thought we were still talking about them at the same time, but we were gonna vote separately.
Right.
Those two will be done after we vote for the block.
Oh, okay, all right.
In fact, I separated it for you.
Okay.
Understanding that you probably wanted to speak to it.
Okay, so, so questions, comments, or concerns on resolutions other than six forty-nine and six fifty-one? Student representatives?
Six forty-five and six forty-six, Hillside Children's Center. I've heard from a lot of students that it's a great program. Besides, the high schools have wellness centers in their high school, but Hillside stepped in with their extra, I guess they had staff who are, it says, quote-unquote, teach skills and positive behavior, help maintain close communication between home and school, and also have your support, just like when you need somebody to talk to. And seeing how in the wellness center there have so many students, and just for Hillside to step in and give them that extra attention, I would thank them for that, and I think it's answered in every high school. I know for a fact that we have one in Charlotte, and I know for a fact that they actually took some kids on the college.
Great, great. Thank you, Ms. Washington. Any, anything else on, on these resolutions excluding six forty-nine through six fifty-one? Okay, all those in favor of Resolutions six forty-three through six fifty-four, with the exception of six forty-nine and six fifty-one, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
On six forty-three, Mr. President, I'm going to abstain.
Okay, six forty-three abstention, and the reason for your abstention, Mr. Williams?
My wife sits on the board.
Okay, thank you. So noted, we will now move on to Resolution six forty-nine. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution six forty-nine. Is there a motion on the floor for that?
Some more.
Moved by Commissioner Campos, seconded by Commissioner Powell, Resolution six forty-nine. Questions, comments, or concerns around Resolution six forty-nine? Commissioner White?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to first thank Auditor General Anissa Wheeler, Henry Wheeler, for her exemplary work and efforts to locate an auditing firm of color that might respond to an RFP for an audit firm to complete our comprehensive annual financial report. Her work in this area is fairly described as unprecedented, and I am very grateful for her work. Notwithstanding those efforts, I am of the opinion that the submission of Resolution six forty-nine is premature. It is premature, as we ought to continue dialogue with various vendors about how they can make their bids more competitive. It is too early to vote in favor of six forty-nine, because we do not know how many minority partners does Freed, I think it's Mexic and Betaglia have. It's too early, because we don't know how many minority accountants, that is women, Latinos, African-Americans, does this selected or preferred accounting firm have. It is too premature to decide to vote for this resolution, because we don't know if this accounting firm has scholarships for people of color, promotes women to positions of management within their accounting firm. These are not unique questions. In fact, many responsible members of our corporate community are asking these critical questions these days. These are difficult and demanding questions, but asked they must be. Walmart, of all people, Walmart is asking these questions. And if they don't get the answers that they anticipate, they're not dealing, for example, with major law firms. Major governmental entities are making decisions, right or wrong, based on whether a vendor or contractor seeking to provide professional services has passed the test of diversity. We simply do not know at this juncture whether this, this accounting firm, which will be the beneficiary of the district's largest, can answer these questions in the affirmative. We don't know, quite frankly, whether there's another organization that can answer these questions affirmatively. But the Board needs to ask these questions before approving Resolution six forty-nine. Professional contracts provide a unique opportunity that competitive bids do not. The Director of Finance, Vinnie Karfagin, has educated me on this process. By and large, the district's rules, the state's rules and laws respecting competitive bidding do not allow this district to choose one contractor over the other based on race. But when it comes to professional contracts, we have greater latitude. We should exercise that latitude responsibly, but we should exercise it. We, in fact, as a district, know what happens when we do not exercise this requisite flexibility. Just recently, I participated in a meeting convened by the Finance Committee, and we learned that our law department in oh-six, oh-seven did not have a single minority contractor receiving its money. I don't want to be quoted on it, but I think the figure was just short of a half a million dollars. Not a single woman firm, not a single Latino firm, not a single African-American firm received a single dollar of this district's money. This, despite the fact that we have this flexibility in professional contracts. We know what happens when we don't exercise the kind of leadership and patience to search out these kind of contractors. These contracts out of the law department represent lost dollars. I fear my vote for Resolution six forty-one will represent a lost opportunity, not only for Latinos, African-Americans, women, but the entire community, to see this district lead and provide the kind of example that governments need when looking to diversify its vendors. I will vote no to Resolution six forty-nine, not as a rejection of the work that has been done to bring us to this point. Clearly, that work has been laudable and exemplary. But I will vote no to suggest to my colleagues the importance of the work that is yet to be done, to ensure that all people, black, white, Latino, and women, benefit from this district's largest. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I'm gonna let members of the Audit Committee also speak to this. Commissioner Williams, followed by Commissioner Powell?
First of all, I'd like to point out that there are five individuals of color on this board, and they are three women. And all of us share a deep and abiding interest in making sure that we have a diversified vendor base. In addition to that, with our new Superintendent, we know that he has recently put in place an, an order to hire an MBE, MWBE monitor, which is something that has not happened before. So I think that, that all demonstrates our commitment to having a diversified vendor base. In terms of this particular resolution, six forty-nine, and again, and I too would like to commend our Auditor General, who is a woman, a woman of color, for making sure that she reached out to at least three minority-owned firms or women-owned firms, to make sure that they were included in the bid base. And out of those three, only one returned a, a bid. And one of the things that you have to be careful about is that our selection of the auditor is governed by, by state law, which says that in selecting a, an auditing firm, we have to do it based on a competitive RFP process. Even though it's a, it may well be a professional service contract, we have to abide by state law. So that's, that's, that more than anything else guided our overall selection or recommendation for that. And in terms of your, your point that we do not know how many minorities, either people of color or women, who are employed at, at the firms, we do. In addition to reaching out to minority firms, the Auditor General also included a questionnaire which, which wanted, and which we wanted to find out what the demographic, demographic profile was of all of the firms, and we, we received that. Now, it may not be to your liking, but we have that information overall. So it's not that, not that, one, that we have sort of shirked our responsibility in reaching out to minority firms, that we shirked our responsibility in not making sure that all the firms who bid do not have on their staff, or not have thought about hiring either competent minorities or women, but they have. So that's, I just want to make that point. And the third thing, more, more so than anything else, the most important thing that we, that we did in terms of how we selected or made a recommendation for the auditor was really guided by, by state law. And there is no, for the most part, there is no getting around that, that we had to take into consideration more than anything else what the final price was. And when you look at the, the variance in prices between the lowest bid firm, the firm that came in second, and the minority-owned firm, there was about a three-hundred-thousand-dollar difference. And if we were to go back and ask any of the firms, well, we could, if we were to go back and ask them to give us a better price, we would have to do it for all of the firms and not just one.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Powell?
Commissioner Williams was pretty thorough. The only thing I would add to that is that there's always a tension between hiring local and hiring minority, and sometimes the two are in conflict with each other, as is the case in the, with, with the bid submissions for the CAFER auditor. The, the one minority firm that did submit a proposal was from the New York City, Washington DC area, and had no offices and is part of the state. So I, I submit to you that if a local firm includes even one minority person on their team for this contract, we are, we are providing more benefit to our own community because that minority person lives in our community. All in all, all of those dollars will stay in the upstate region, and very likely, the additional cost in, in the minority contractor, consultants' bid is the product of having to travel into a part of the state that they're not accustomed to, having to put those people up in hotels and pay their, their travel back and forth. So it's unlikely that they'd be able to reduce their bid in any event, because they're not local. So I only add that to Commissioner Williams's remarks. I do appreciate the cause. I, I know that this is important to you, and wanted to make sure you had the time to articulate your, your concerns. However, I do think we did the best job we could, given that the, the clock is ticking. We do need to hire a CAFER auditor, the city has already done it. It's time to move on and try harder the next go-round.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Commissioner Williams, maybe you could help me understand this just a little bit better. Does the MWBE monitor that's anticipated, is, is that the installation or the creation of that position better assure that the questions that Van would like asked, would be asked?
Mr. Brazier?
Or, or, yeah, either, either one.
The answer is yes, but we're also doing that as well as in anticipation of FMP and everything else we do on facilities.
Okay. And the, the RFP process is similar to the competitive bidding process, as I understand it, and limits us much as that process does?
Well, I, I think there is a distinction between the normal RFP process and a competitive RFP process. The, the RFP process, well, sort of the normal RFP process, you can take into consideration a lot of other factors in addition to cost, and basically you can, and someone correctly from wrong, you can choose whoever you want, regardless of what the price is. On a competitive RFP process, which is what, I mean, the state, or the state law specifically says.
Requires.
Competitive RFP, I, I take that to mean that more than anything else, you have to take into consideration cost, and there's a further clause in there that you have, we have to exercise our fiduciary responsibility and make sure that the public's money is looked after.
Finally, when do we anticipate that the, that the MWBE monitor will be online and to work?
Mr. Brazier?
Much of our organization will start at June first or July first, but book will be July one for the new fiscal year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campos?
I'm good.
Commissioner Elliott?
Just a few thoughts that, that I've, I've written down. You know, I support Commissioner White's passion on this. Everybody knows that this is a huge issue for me, and, and I won't back down on it on any level, because this is about fairness and equity. And as I was talking to the Auditor General earlier today, you know, on some levels, you know, this whole notion of democracy, it primarily works for white people, doesn't work for black people. And so I'm, I'm pleased to know that the Superintendent is going to be hiring a, the person for the MBW, the MWBE issues and initiatives, because somehow we've got to come up with, through dialogue, an approach to how all people have an opportunity. You know, if the criteria is solely the low bidding, you know, people, and particularly white firms who've been around a long time, have an advantage. And so, and, and those of persons of color who are just becoming into the business, if you will, there tends to be a disadvantage, and so, so, so I'm, I'm delighted to know that the Superintendent is going to, is, is looking at identifying this person so that we... person so that we can have a dialogue, particularly around the whole notion of fairness and equity. And I would also say that this issue has to be a core value of the district, that every employee of the district, all of us on this board, are embracing that diversity is important. It is a high priority for us. And there's been, and not to really get into history, but there's this notion of structural inequality, you know, that we've had in our policies. And so, you know, I'm just delighted that we're going to be looking at this as a board to really come to grips with how can we have all people to be involved, and not to only have white women to meet certain goals, and we determine that, you know, we've met our affirmative action goals, or met whatever goals that we have decided. Thank you, President Evans.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Yes, just to respond to a couple of comments. First of all, and I'm not sure if I understood Commissioner Williams correctly, but I want to make sure he and my colleagues understood me. My comments are a reflection of my own personal beliefs, and simply because I have them doesn't mean that I'm suggesting that others don't. I just wanted to be clear on that, Commissioner Williams. I know many of you pretty well, and know some of you very well, and there's not a single person on here who I would believe would take issue with anything that I said. While you may disagree with me on the vote, I have every confidence that you support in spirit and in mind some of the tenets that I just laid out. I too am delighted to know that Superintendent Buzard intends on appointing someone to help us do our job, but the operative phrase there is "help us." This is our responsibility, and my comments were framed in that respect. Then let me also indicate that I didn't want to bore folks with the details, but the extra step that I was suggesting, which was approved, or was reviewed by the district's lead counsel, was an additional call to each of these firms. That is lawful. I mean, Ellen, you're an accountant, I'm a lawyer, but I wouldn't substitute my opinion or your opinion for her opinion any day. And she gave us the opinion that it was lawful and appropriate to speak to these firms and ask them some of these questions, for example, about bidding. Would it be a waste of this community's time to pick up the phone and have the Auditor General call up each of these firms, not just one, and say, hey, listen, we're interested in a more competitive bid? I don't think it would be a waste of the time. I think it would be further setting an example of what this district can do by leading this community. And finally, let me say that Commissioner Powell indicates that it was unlikely that they would adjust their bid. She might be right. But when we talk about all these issues that are so important to everybody, we ought not to say what might have happened. We ought to know what would have happened. And because we didn't follow up on the advice given to us by our lead counsel, we'll never know whether they would have adjusted their bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I am going to, before I call the question, I'm going to let Commissioner Williams make one more statement.
Yeah, point of personal privilege.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, clarify that the lead counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, did not necessarily suggest that we should go back and canvass all three. I mean, that, her response was a question, was, her response was in a question that we presented to her. It's not that she came to us and said, you guys should go back and do this.
No, I didn't suggest it. I said, she said it was lawful and appropriate to reengage these three firms in this conversation about the bid. And I see over there nodding her head. She wasn't saying that this is what we should do. The question was asked, would this be lawful? You know, you're talking about state law, and you're saying this, we've got to be careful, this is state law. We asked the person who had the answer, and the answer was, it is lawful, it is appropriate to go back to these people and ask them the question. We never asked them that question. I think that was a mistake.
Thank you. I'm going to call the question on this. Just let me say that I think that this-
Just a process question.
Process question.
The President can't call the question. You can ask.
Well, I'm going to ask to call the question, okay?
I will call the question for you.
Right. We're going to vote on it. I just want to say that I think there's a lot of opportunity for us in this district, as well as the city, to make sure that we put our best foot forward in terms of MWBE. I think that this particular resolution is unique in that it is a participation with the city in terms of our finances. And I know that our MWBE person that you will designate, either June 30th or July 1st, will make sure that they've carried out your wishes, as well as the board's wishes, in making sure that we make sure that all folks have access to the district's largest. I will start with our student representative. Your advisory vote, student rep?
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call vote on this. Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Respectfully, no.
Commissioner Elliott?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan?
No.
I vote yes. The ayes have it. That passes 5-2. Last resolution tonight is Resolution 651. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution 651?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Campbell's. Questions around Resolution 651? Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, I have questions. This is a contract for a period of January 1 through May 1, is now April 24th. A contract of this nature should have come before us in December, and I'm wondering why we are presented with it now in the latter part of April.
This was an item that came out of the Board Governance Committee?
Right. This actually is different than what I had submitted in a letter. The resolution, we actually should have pulled this language, but this resolution should have been for payment of the services that she's already rendered, actually.
But there's no resolution authorizing a contract.
I think President Evans is going to have to speak to that.
From what I understand, the Board Governance has submitted a resolution for Scott Associates, Inc. for $1,725 for work that she's done. They're making a recommendation to the board to pay Scott Associates $1,725 for work that has been done.
And President Evans, if I may, Commissioner Powell's, because there was some concern around that, we were discussing this in the Board Governance Committee, so it should not be the contract that we are approving this evening. It should only be, because she's already done the work, and we recognize that we did not have a contract in place, that we are only going, and we've been discussing this in Board Governance, that we're going to, we want to pay her for the work that we've done, because we do, however, although it did not come to the board for approval, we do have a signed contract by our president for her services, and she has conducted those, some of the services.
Commissioner Campbell?
Well, one of the things is, we figured just pay her, we had the invoices, and one of the things, she does not want to further work with the board, so-
Well, let me just, let me just point, let me just clarify that, that, because I got a subsequent message, there may be some opportunity there. But that's a, that's an issue that we can discuss in the committee. But for the time being, because there's been many mistakes around this resolution, and as I said, because we do have a signed contract, we're just asking, under the resolution, that she be paid for service, already completed.
Commissioner Brennan?
I was not present at the emergency governance meeting the 22nd, and only, know of it from casual conversations I've had with a couple of you since then. There's two issues here, really. One is something that Commissioner Elliott has spoken to pretty forcefully with respect to other resolutions, and that's the calendar, the timeliness of, you know, approving a contract that expires on May 1st on April 24th. And we have, among ourselves, addressed the issue, and I hope that our seriousness, those of us who've raised this concern, is, has been absorbed, that contracts simply cannot be signed without the approval of the full board. No committee, you know, no officer unilaterally can do that. And that should be across the board. This should not be with respect to this individual. I'm beside myself, actually, that that could have happened. The issue before us here, although it's not reflected in the language, as Commissioner Elliott, you know, that's in front of us, as Commissioner Elliott had pointed out, is, was work done? Was it done in good faith? Was there a reasonable expectation while she was doing the work that she was proceeding properly under an approved contract? That's the heart of the matter. If she knew that it hadn't been properly approved, there'd be more of an issue. If there was a reasonable expectation on her part, while she conducted the meetings, conducted the coaching sessions, did the work, I think that there's a moral obligation, if nothing else, to pay the contract. And it troubles me, you know, because, because I'm very unhappy with the way this unfolded, and I hope that all of us, you know, view this as a teachable moment, and we don't do this again. But invoices have been submitted. My two colleagues on the Governance Committee can stipulate that they're satisfied that the work was done. And if that's the case, in this instance, I think we ought to, we ought to pay the contract, pay for the work that was done, keep this very much in mind as we anticipate working further, you know, in any further contractual arrangement with this individual or this firm, and all of us be a lot more careful in the future about, I understand this was special circumstances, and I don't want to pillory anybody about this, but I just want it understood really clearly how seriously troubled I am by the way this unfolded. President Evans-
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan, Commissioner Elliott?
This speaks to just the whole, whole broad issues that we have in our board staff department. I mean, we've got, we've sought, in my two years of being here, there have just been, as we're finding from Board Governance-
If we're going to talk about staff, I'd rather do-
No, 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 not staff per se, but there were some things that we should have done, in terms of resolutions, in terms of hiring staff, and done them in terms of a resolution, that we had not done. If you recall, I believe, last month or the month prior, that we brought before the board, in official formal capacity, the hiring of our staff. That had never been done before in a resolution. So we're discovering that there are just some issues and some inefficiencies that this board just has not addressed in a formal capacity, and this just, this happens to be one of them.
Okay. Last comment. Commissioner Powell?
I reject the idea that there's any parallel between the actions of the other month in regard to official appointments of staff. We were operating under an opinion of previous legal minds that the staff resolution was not necessary because our staff fell under the superintendent's Employee Group guidelines. The parallel, yes, there's certainly struggles, but I don't see the parallel. In this particular instance of this resolution, every board member knows or should know that none of us can act independent of our, of our work here as a body. Every one of us knows or should know that the committees are not empowered to take any action on their own, but have to bring their work to the board for approval. Governance Committee should have brought this resolution to the board in December 2007. The leadership of the Board Governance Committee has not changed. An opportunity was present in February, in January, in February, and in March, and we're only now seeing a resolution on this topic of any kind. If it's, if it is essentially to terminate the contract, I understand it, I appreciate it, work done in good faith, I appreciate that. But on the same grounds that was exercised in voting no for maternity leave, because dates were expired, you can expect me to vote no on this.
Thank you. I'm going to start with a roll call vote.
Commissioner Evans, I apologize. President Evans, but I do, I do want to respond to that. I think that the heart of the question here is, was the work done in good faith? That's, to me, that's the question. The fact that we didn't proceed the way we should have is serious, and it's something that we need to address. It's very serious, and I can't say that strongly enough. And I, and I don't think this sort of thing will be repeated. And I would just point out that I didn't vote no on those previous resolutions, even though I understood the issues that were being raised for precisely the reasons that those of you at the other end of the table articulated very well. It's important to have the question raised, it's important to straighten out the process, but it's not right to penalize people who have done work any more than it's right to penalize a parent who needs maternity leave, because our processes have not been, have not been improved the way they should. So that's my reasoning, and I certainly understand and respect the integrity of everybody's position here in this discussion. But I think, at the very least, we know that we have a problem that we have to address, and I'm confident that we will.
Point of order?
Mr. President, I would only add that Commissioner Brennan has made a compelling argument. I should not fall into the same trap that I have been so critical of, and Commissioner Brennan is correct. Work done in good faith deserves to be compensated. I hope that I've made my point.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be clear of what we're voting on, in terms of the language under 651 on this document, that's not what we are asking, the Board Governance Committee is asking to be approved. We're asking to be to prove the resolution that Scott Associates be authorized payment of $1,725 to Scott Associates for consulting services that were rendered to the board. That's what we're asking.
Commissioner Elliott, I'm going to ask that you make an amendment to Resolution 651 and reflect exactly what it is you're reading there.
So moved. That's the amendment that, the Resolution 651-
Can you read that one more time?
Certainly. Authorized payment of $1,725 to Scott Associates for consulting services that were rendered to the board.
Thank you. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second?
The second.
Thank you. We'll vote on that. All those in favor of that amendment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Okay, the ayes have it. We're going to call the question on Resolution 651. Is that okay? We'll start with Commissioner Brennan.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Elliott?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
I vote yes. The ayes have it. That concludes our resolution section. Before I move on to unfinished business from a previous meeting, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the time beyond 8:30. I know you all want to go home, but we're going longer.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will now move on to new business, and I'm going to turn it over first to Commissioner Brennan from the Policy Committee. You have two policies before you, Policy 5153 with Parent Preference Managed Choice, and also Policy 5100 around attendance. After Commissioner Brennan speaks to those, I'm going to turn the floor over to Commissioner Campbell's. Commissioner Brennan, as Chair of the Policy Committee, could you please speak to those two resolutions?
Yes, the attendance policy change reflects a subject we've discussed at some length in the past, and that is simply raising the dropout rate, or the dropout age to 17 from 16, which we're empowered to do according to state law. You know, it has been an issue that's been discussed extensively. Commissioner Elliott took the lead in moving this issue forward, and I would, if she has anything further to add to this?
Oh, I'm, I was just moving back so that Commissioner Evans, Commissioner White can see you. I'm actually excited about this. This is basically an opportunity for us to increase the dropout legal age for the district from 16 to 17. On the state level, this language is already- On the state level, this language is already, um, um, already there, but we have not adjusted our records or our policies to include the fact that we need to have our children to stay in school as long as possible. And this is, um, a way in which, uh, we can have our children, our students, really to begin, give them a little longer to think about whether or not they should be dropping out of school. Um, you know, as they get older, they mature, uh, more and they have, you know, a little bit more exposure to, to life and, uh, the fact that they need to be considering, uh, further education. I just don't want to give them an easy way out. Uh, they need to stay in school. And so as a result of that, the language is already on the state level, um, it was the Policy Committee's position that we, um, amend our policy to, uh, increase, um, the age level, drop, legal dropout age to 17.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Campos.
I think that that's a, you know, great argument. My one question is, do we have the system to be able to support this policy?
Good question. Um, and then we are in the discussion phase of this policy and we're going to, uh, if we do pass this, we will pass it next month, just so the folks in the audience and at home know. Um, Mr. Bizar.
Children are allowed to be in school until they're 21 years old, so the answer is yes.
Commissioner.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Powell.
Uh, I was, I am a member of that committee and I did approve its advancement. However, uh, I don't, uh, I have a similar question to Commissioner Campos's and that is, are there budget implications? We are in the process of, uh, adopting next year's budget. Are there additional costs, for instance, of the truancy, trying to bring these kids back to school, that translate into real dollars spent by the district? Will we need to be, will we need to hire more people, uh, to, to keep these kids, uh, coming to school? And secondly, could we get, uh, an analysis of, um, what we think the impact is going to be? Are we going to have, are we going to actually change behaviors on the ground? Are, are, or are, are children going to unofficially drop out long before they are officially eligible to drop out?
Yeah. Um, quite a few questions. The, the analysis question is, is certainly is worthwhile and one we should do. Uh, we do have a truancy cent, a number of truancy centers, we have a truancy program. Um, right now, we don't know if they're operating at capacity. My guess is they are operating well on the capacity. There certainly are budgetary implications, uh, but on the other hand, um, it certainly is worthwhile, um, uh, thing to pursue. Um, I guess if I were to offer my own opinion, um, I've not had many students ask for permission to drop out. They usually, uh, walk out of school, uh, on their own. Uh, it is incumbent on us as educators, um, and as, as the gatekeepers, to find these students. So the, the answer is, uh, I guess it's short, yes, that we need to do a lot, um, better job of reaching out to kids who have disengaged from our schools. There, there are budgetary implications, but we've got the systems in place and we need to pursue it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions around?
Only, only a follow up to that.
Yes, Commissioner Powell.
And that is, um, is it likely that your staff would be able to provide us any, uh, you know, insight as to what we're likely to, likely to face? Would we be able to get that feedback by next month?
Sure, we could do an analysis and come back in about a month, sure.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions, comments, or concerns around, um, attendance slash participation policy 5100, proposed to be acted on at the May, uh, Board Meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'll, we'll, um, hear back in policy on May regarding that one. Around 5153, Commissioner Brennan, uh, anything around that you wanted to add or say? I know that we will act on this next month.
Right, not much. The parent, the parent preference managed choice policy has been, an issue that's been with us for a very long time and, um, I, I did want to express appreciation both to Commissioner, to former Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Powell for the work that they've done on this issue. Um, the proposed changes going forward are the creation of zone improvement teams, um, which was contemplated actually originally, as I understand it, when the policy was first formulated and, uh, and not done and language is inserted to, to tighten that up. There's also temporary transitional language that deals with, um, you know, the percentage of proximity seats and the honoring of existing boundaries, pre-existing boundaries that addressed that issue relative to, um, the, the pole between neighborhood schools and choice for access to better schools throughout the city. And it was, at the time, I think, believed by all parties concerned to be useful and necessary language at that time that represented, um, both preserving the integrity of the policy that the Board had passed some years earlier and their concerns. Um, there's a belief now that the elimination of this transitional language, um, is of little impact because the demand for, for available seats in the schools affected, which brought about the original tension that brought about this original, original transitional language, is such that, that again, without that language, both, um, both points of view can be accommodated. Um, I'm not entirely certain of that myself, but I do understand that the Board passed a policy some time ago that the language, when it was inserted into this policy, was temporary and understood to be temporary. That, to me, means that the issue is to be revisited later, not necessarily that the language is to be eliminated, but, um, you know, what we, what we need probably is a fuller discussion and I would, would personally like to, um, to take special care that the parents who have been interested in this issue and who have worked with the district and who helped bring about the original compromise a couple of years ago, simply be brought into the loop a bit more and, and have a fuller understanding that what they've been given operationally until now by this temporary language, or what they've been given by the temporary language will probably be available to them operationally going forward because of the demand that exists.
Thank you. And I believe we approved two resolutions tonight, Mr. Superintendent, that relate directly to this.
We would anticipate acting on this next month, is correct.
Right, next month. And we have two resolutions, uh, tonight, uh, to support organizations that will help us as we flesh out this parent preference managed choice policy. Uh, Commissioner Powell and then, Mr. Superintendent.
The only thing I would add is to bring, uh, forward from our Policy Committee for the benefit of the audience, some of the conversation around this policy. As we talked about, um, inserting language for zone improvement teams, uh, there is active and vigorous dialogue about what parent representation and what community representation there would be on these community, uh, the, on these improvement teams. In the end, there were a number of proposals and amendments offered up, but we realized, even as we were making them, that changes made on the fly would be, um, potentially hazardous and potentially not accomplish what we were hoping to accomplish. So the policy before you is exactly as it came out of the Ad-Hoc Committee back in December, um, with the idea that we need to spend time on, uh, on, uh, do, you know, the question of whether we need to stipulate exactly how many community and parent members should be on each zone team, or whether that is something that should be left entirely to the prerogative of the superintendent or just what. That's a conversation that we really ought to have immediately after we pass the policy that actually, um, that actually creates the zone improvement.
The teeth.
The teeth. Whether it should be superintendent's regulations or whether it should reside in the policy itself. All of that was set aside, um, and the, and the version of the policy that was advanced is the same version that came out of the Ad-Hoc Committee in December.
Right, okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
Sure, just to add to, um, to, to this, just two items. One is that Resolution 650 talks to the innovation. The Institute for Innovation in Public School Choice will look at the managed choice program as required by the Board back in December, as well as looking at secondary, um, schools' choice. Uh, some parents have expressed interest in discussion in looking at even opening opportunities for eighth grade students as they enter ninth grades. So all of those issues will be reviewed by the Institute and, uh, feedback will be provided back to, to this Board of Education. If I may add one, one last thing?
Yes.
Mr. President, and hopefully I'm not out of order. Um, a few months ago, not a few months ago, back in December, I had the pleasure of having, um, dinner and meeting, um, the President's wonderful girlfriend. Um, and if I may, uh, be so bold as to, um, announce and very happy to, to announce that, um, Mr. Malik Evans is now engaged to Mr. Juan de Ground. Would you like to stand, Mr. Rondo?
No, don't do that, no. This is superintendent, oh, man, okay.
So the President and the Superintendent are both getting married, uh, this, this year, I guess, so.
It's a good drunk wedding.
You're blushing. Any other, uh, thing to, anything else on the new business before we move on?
You're trouble, Malik.
Um, Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I, I was going to say, um, as I sort of look at the two resolutions that, or proposed resolutions that come up, uh, under new business today, I, I think it only reaffirms some of the comments that were made at the last Board Meeting. I know there is a desire, based on how, uh, some of our, uh, past practices have gone, suggests that the system is broken and it doesn't work, but I think today is a wonderful example of what comes out of these committees. We've got two significant, uh, policies that will change the way we do business that are adaptive. We saw problems in the process and the committee process fixed them out. I, I wanted to indicate to Commissioner Brennan, I appreciate, uh, also his committee considering, uh, the resolution, the proposed resolution I put forward, and I appreciate the fact that it had to go for further consultation with general counsel and so forth. So I, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, I believe this is evidence that our committee system works.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Brennan?
A very brief point of personal privilege. Van, we, we have great, as you know, greatly enjoyed informally many, you know, um, fun discussions about our differences of opinion about, about that. I would just say that, point out that the discussion we had, um, about the cross-pollination of the parent preference managed choice and the zone improvement teams, uh, and what, and what did we have a discussion of at the, at that committee meeting? A discussion of the parent involvement policy, um, at the same time. And this is a good example of how sometimes there's an overlap of issues and there's a synergy between the work of various committees. And you could make the case that it might be more in the public interest if everybody was present at the creation, as a lot of these issues, which are often discussed separately at different committees, with the left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing and without everybody, um, hearing a full range of opinions and, and, and factoring everything, in everything that needs to be factored in, might be better served if it was done by the entire Board at the very beginning, which is, as it has done very successfully in many districts.
Okay. Remember the discussion from last night that went on and on about, we're just going to talk about the policies tonight, guys. Um, so obviously if there's, um, questions in the, in the interim on these policies, feel free to, um, um, you know, let Commissioner Brennan and the Policy Committee know, um, what you're thinking around this. I, I just want to say, I think both of these are absolutely important policies, great policies, um, and, and looking forward to be moving, moving forward. I know also, um, and Commissioner Elliott and Brennan and, um, Powell, I, I know there's also some talk of talking also to our state folks about trying to do, uh, raise the state's, um, dropout age also, so.
In, in, in fact, we, we, uh, I was at the, the Community Intergovernmental Relations Committee, um, back probably a couple of months ago, uh, actually talking about, um, just this, this issue.
Thank you. Um, okay, we'll move on to, um, other new business. Uh, Commissioner Campos.
Pretty much, we don't recognize our students enough and this recommendation is the, is a vehicle to do that and also to engage our community. Monthly events, this is in reference, we all have this amendment right here, it's Policy 2300. Monthly student recognition events would be a maximum of 15 minutes and we would alternate between elementary and secondary students or programs. Board staff would work with the superintendent's staff to identify potential participants and the events would recognize student achievement in academics and extracurricular activities. This could be individual or group achievements and amending the bylaws to include student recognition would formalize the process, create some sustainability and underscore the Board's core mission, which is to increase student achievement. Without an amendment, we have concerns that student recognition could be marginalized when lengthy Board meetings such as this one are anticipated. We recommend that the student recognition be inserted as a new item number three, following the acceptance of minutes and preceding speakers on agenda items. Because this recommendation was made by CIGR at the March 27th Business Meeting and it was assigned to the committee, to a committee by the President and then considered by that committee with no action, I respectfully move that we waive the one week notice requirement and approve the proposed amendment to Policy 2300.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Williams. Um, discussions on the motion on the floor.
Well, first, uh, let me first.
Commissioner Powell.
Let me first state that, uh, even without the recommendations of the Policy Committee, we have a three-step policy adoption process that involves information item where, uh, the proposal is circulated in writing to all Board members, followed by a discussion item, which we've just had demonstrated, and then, uh, 30 days later, the, uh, vote on that and referred to as the action item. So if you're asking for a bylaws change, um, you know, we can, we can talk about waiving the, um, the information item aspect in order to get to this point of discussion item, but, you know, really in fairness to our own policies, uh, we should not be considering adoption of this, uh, any sooner than those items that have gone through the Policy Committee.
Uh, Commissioner White, you were going to?
Well, you know, here's the irony of this, um, I, I have no objection to this concept, but, uh, this is, to have it just sort of thrown at us and be asked to vote on it right away is a bit disconcerting. So I, again, my initial impression of this, this makes sense, but I would like to hear why it didn't, it didn't come up the normal process. I suspect that there is some dissenting opinions about it and I'd like to hear those and if they're not, I'd like to hear some dialogue about it and I just don't know that we have the time to do it tonight.
Well, let me, um, one second, um, just, just to refresh everyone's memory, at the last Board Meeting, I referred this item to the Policy Committee for some type of action, either yes or no or, or nothing, and I don't know what came out of it, so I'm going to yield the floor to Commissioner Brennan to update us on.
But if, if I could just finish my, I wasn't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, the other sort of question I have, and it's a process question, and I, I don't think any good idea should be caught up in process, but, but we do have a process and, and now we have a committee process and, and until, uh, the group decides it's going to change, I, I'm also left wondering clearly, and again, I don't think people should say no to a good idea simply because you didn't follow the process, but this sounds to me like governance and I, I don't, I don't understand and it could be a legitimate reason for it. Now, I know you do your best to, to make sure that the appropriate committees get, uh, appropriate assignments, but I don't understand why, even after it went to community, uh, intergovernmental relations, why it didn't go to, uh, governance. And, and Tom, just to sort of piggyback on that argument that we're going to have later on, um, it, it has been known to work. I mean, the suggestion that, uh, because not everybody's there at the same time, you can't have, everybody can't have their hands in the cookie jar, that's not true. We have had, uh, resolutions that have come before one committee and have been transferred to another committee and we have had, and we vetted them that way and we've had a thorough discussion, then they come before the full Board and the full Board discusses it. I, I don't see why, and again, I might just be missing something because I wasn't, wasn't at these meetings, why this couldn't have gone from intergovernmental relations to governance. I, I don't think that because people want to take the time to thoroughly pick apart an idea, uh, and that that may require multiple assignments of an idea, I don't think that's a bad idea. I think sometimes ideas need to be tested and, and hammered out and the committee process lends that. So, Commissioner Campos, I, this idea in its face sounds like a very good idea, but I would like to see other voices and, and hear what they have to say about it. So I would suggest that it go to governance.
Just to recap, just, let me just recap. Um, so this policy came from intergovernmental and was presented at the last Board Meeting. I then forwarded this to policy because it's a pro, it is a proposed amendment to Section 9, Policy 2300, which relates to the Board policy and Board Policy Committee is charged with, um, making recommendations or modifications to the Board policy. So that's why this went to policy, because it, it would, it would change our policy, um, uh, manual, because this is part of our, of our policy manual. So, um, but Commissioner Brennan, you're Chair of Policy and this came to your committee, so I'll yield the floor.
Yes, I'm, I'm the guilty party here. This, this, um, I think this is an excellent example of how, um, we can make things more complicated than we need to and sometimes the committee system lends itself to that. than we need to, and sometimes the committee system lends itself to that. Here's simply an idea that we, at the beginning of our meetings, recognize student achievement in, in a public way at the beginning of our meetings. I can't think of anything less controversial, and anything that it is, it is less necessary for us to go through the dance of the seven veils over than this. And we do, and this is precisely my point about that, Van, and we'll have a cup of coffee about that down the road, but really, the philosophical question between committees or non-commissions is just, really is a speed thing, an efficiency thing. Do you, do you have, have processes in place? And sometimes it can be very beneficial to have, to have to go through several committees and have things referred back to committees and have things examined extremely carefully. Sometimes it isn't, and that's an honorable sort of philosophical difference, and the majority of board will just have to decide how they wanna, you know, what they're more comfortable with, and we have fun discussing that. But in this instance, this seems to me to be a no-brainer. We could, in fact, suspend the rules and do it. We retain that option. We could also send it back to governance. I would have absolutely no problem with that. I'm sure that governance won't resist this, and I was, in the, in the policy manual, there's a section F with respect to amendments. It says, "Rules and regulations may be amended at any business meeting or any special meeting by the affirmative vote of four members of the board, provided that any member or any proposed amendment shall have been submitted in writing to the members at a regular or special meeting at least one week prior to the meeting at which the vote is taken." So, on those things, on those questions, whether we have committees or not, that, and this would seem to me to have a good prospect of being one of them, because I don't think it's terribly controversial, we could follow that process as well.
Mr. President? Commissioner Elliott and then Commissioner Campos.
I was one of those, I'm on the Policy Committee and did not make a motion to move it. Again, particularly since, you know, I chair board governance, it's important to me, in my, in our role on this committee, that we, you know, be the conscious, if you will, of our board. This is about process for the board, and the fact of the matter is, and I'm not sure, you know, why Commissioner Campos had to leave, but when we got to this particular item, Commissioner Campos had to leave. So, we did not get an opportunity in policy to discuss it with her. And I would have certainly said to her then, what I'm saying now, that I think that this is a matter that should be discussed in governance, and the fact is, is that both Commissioner Brennan and Commissioner Campos serve on the board governance. So, it's not gonna be a, you know, it's not gonna be a long and drawn-out process, I don't believe we could talk about it there. But here, again, for me, it gets back to the point of structure and, you know, we dotting our i's and crossing our t's, that we don't get convoluted in the way in which we carry out our responsibilities as a board. Thank you.
Commissioner Campos?
I can definitely appreciate what Commissioner Elliott and Commissioner White are saying in terms of it should go to board governance. We have to remember, one, that this was actually discussed in our first retreat, and it was discussed in a way of how can we engage the community, how can we engage our parents? Notice, as Commissioner Brennan was stating earlier, these committees are very synergistic in some ways, and, for instance, finance, a few months ago, was talking about pre-apprentice and FMP, and so there is a lot of overlap. And so, we have the intent of involving the community, and that was strictly it. It wasn't about a board process. It was, what can we do to bring the community, to create some excitement for the community, but also to create a sense of pride for the parents and have them come and watch their kids get recognized at a board meeting? Also on top of that, let's see, one other thing. I don't think this is also a best practice in Long Beach. They recognize a student every single board meeting. So, it's proven, and I think that it really starts us off right. You know, if you talk about it in a government, in a governance perspective, it helps us keep the perspective of why we're making the decisions that we are. And lastly, I don't think that there's any point in dotting the i's or crossing the t's when we're talking about taking 15 minutes to recognize our students.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. Williams, and I'll just add, you know, we recognized Timothy Mitchum here at this meeting, took six minutes. We recognized nationally certified teachers, that took about 11.5 minutes. So, this is not something that is protracted, drawn out, or add to long meetings, and it's something that I think would be a great way to start off the meeting, recognizing our student, and I don't want us to get too bogged down when we're talking about something that I believe is so simple. But Commissioner Williams?
Well, I agree. I mean, I think the first thing is, you know, we should have a reality check. It's about kids. It's not about process or anything else. It's about kids. And this is precisely why we should abolish the committees. You know, this kind of going back and forth. I mean, think, think about, think of what it's gonna look like tomorrow in the newspaper when they say, "Rochester City School Board tables a debate on whether or not to recognize student achievement." I mean, it makes us look like a bunch of bumbling idiots. It does. I mean, we have to go back to a committee to decide whether or not, or table a discussion in terms of whether or not we're gonna recognize our students. I'm speechless.
I would, I'm glad you're speechless, because I think that, you know, Alan, it's interesting to hear your comments now, Commissioner Williams, it's interesting to hear your comments now. By your comments, you're implying that people who, and I don't know where I fall in this, people who want to make sure that the process is respected somehow don't recognize and value kids. If a reporter writes that, I don't give a damn, because that's, that wouldn't be an accurate reflection of me. I'm not afraid of what the press will say about me. I'm not driven by that. But I do reflect back to comments earlier, and there was great tension over a contract that people didn't follow the process. There's a reason why there's, nobody here in this room thinks, well, perhaps so, that people sit up here, don't care about kids, that there's no one here who doesn't wanna recognize kids, but we, we are an organization that sometimes drops the ball when it comes to process. It's about discipline. It's about making sure that when you do something, you're in the practice of doing it the right way each and every time. Now, Commissioner Brennan, I thought I heard you say, and if I didn't hear you correctly, you will correct me, I'm sure, that the rule that you read from suggested that in order for an idea like this to be considered, it had to be considered, provided a week in advance, is that what you said? Okay. Now, if that rule, if we were given this a week in advance, this is where I am with the rules, if we were given this a week in advance, I could vote for that. But if we were not, I don't care what you say, Commissioner Williams, if we were not given this a week in advance, I think we have to have the discipline to abide by the rules. And then, next meeting, we'll recognize the kids. This isn't about never recognize, for you to suggest that, Commissioner Williams, is disingenuous. This, this not what this debate about. This is about an organization that historically has not had the discipline to conduct itself in the way it needs to. And that's all people asking for, just the discipline to follow the rules, and we will recognize kids. Maybe not next month, but maybe the month after that. It'll happen, don't worry.
Mr.- Commissioner White? I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner, it's getting late, Commissioner Williams.
With all due respect, Commissioner White, I mean, there are some things that are so self-evident. You know, the question in terms of whether or not we should vote today to recognize the students, it's like saying, you know, do you love your mother? Do you love your parents?
Come on, Commissioner Williams.
It is, I mean, how, but how, trust me, guys, I mean, how ridiculous are we gonna look?
Stop worrying about what people are gonna think.
Or even now, when we're, we have to decide in a committee whether or not to recognize students at the beginning of our, you know, it's just like if a kid comes up and says, you know, "I'd like you to, to recognize my achievements," oh, we can't do that. You have to go through the right process.
Nobody's saying-
Commissioner, Commissioner Powell?
Nobody is saying that. Let me, I'll tell you, the reason it got bottled up in committee, I wouldn't vote for it. I wouldn't raise, I would not motion, move to advance it, I would not, would not have seconded it if it had been moved. And the reason, not, so, because, so now let's stop talking about process and let's talk about this, this particular proposal. The very beginning of this section of our bylaws says that the order of business is established by the president. The president of this board always, always, always has the ability to recognize students and to insert that agenda into an agenda, and does not have to ask the permission of this board. That is the one prerogative of the president that, that has been applied to this, to our bylaws, and quite frankly, we already spend at least, at least four hours a year, four hours, not 15 minutes, so, I mean, we've already covered it. We have the Black History Month celebration, where we spend at least an hour recognizing students from all of our high schools, and performances by our elementary schools. In March, we have Women's History Month, we spend at least an hour recognizing our, us women who achieve. In the fall, we have our Hispanic Heritage Month, and again, at least an hour. In June, we have sports recognitions, at least an hour, especially if we have Section 5 champions. Today, we recognized your son, and we recognized Timothy Mitchum. We recognize students whenever students rise to the occasion of being recognized, and it is always the prerogative of the president, and therefore, I think that it diminishes the role of the president by, by deciding this for him. I would reject this, this policy recognition on that basis alone.
Student rep?
Okay, it is late. I think this is like the second wasted conversation. The first one was all the calculations with the math. Keep in mind, I am a student, I already had math early days, so the number thing already had threw me off, but this conversation, I mean, you just gave, Commissioner Powell, you just gave a solution to it. Why don't the president, you can just keep announcing the kids?
Keep on doing it.
It's a great, it's a great policy. I do admit, I think that there can never be too many celebrations. You listed a few, but I don't think you can ever congratulate a child too much. I don't, what's the need to go to different policies? What's the need to go to different groups or committees? What is the need? If we all agree on it, or we all think it's important, it shouldn't have to be passed around if you all work together and you all are for the students. This is, this can, next topic?
Right. Thank you. See, she had homework, she has homework to do. Commissioner, Commissioner Campos?
I just, well, one of the things I just wanna say, I just can't believe we're having this much of a conversation in regards to student achievement, and the reason why we wanted to create the policy change was so that there is sustainability, because if we don't put it in policy, it more than likely won't get done as frequently as possible. And in regards to the president, say that there's a new president, he can amend the bylaws next time around.
It's not about, it's, so- It's not about the president amending the bylaws, we're talking about leaving it out of the bylaws entirely so that the president has it at his disposal to it, to establish the agenda. That is his prerogative.
Mr. President? Yes, then I wanna, then I wanna bring this conversation to a close, because the hour is getting late, and I wanna come to some conclusion. Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, just reading what Commissioner Brennan read earlier on, it says, "The rules and regulations may be amended at any business or special meeting by the affirmative vote of four members of the board, provided that any proposed amendment shall have been submitted in writing to the members at a regular or special meeting at least one week prior to the meeting at which the vote is taken." I appreciate the fact. I, I'm in a profession where there are rules, and you gotta abide by them. I'm also in a profession that understands that it is important to recognize the good in people, but we have to lead by example. What will it hurt us to abide by the rules and wait so that people have this for a week? That's all, that's all I'm saying. Not, don't misconstrue my words, say, "Oh, he doesn't respect kids, I don't care what anybody's thinking when they're watching the TV." All I'm saying is, we have to lead by example. We do have rules. We tell our children, abide by the rules. And absent, and I'm not saying send it to governance, this was an appropriate vehicle to do this, had everybody been given this by a week. We can't just say, forget it, just because we wanna recognize kids. You can't do that. We expect our kids in the classroom to abide by the rules, we expect our citizens in the community to abide by the laws, we ought to do the same. And what does it mean? What does the delay mean? We don't have this in the bylaws for another month. Who's that gonna hurt? We already recognize kids today, as Commissioner Powell noted. It's not gonna hurt anything. We're not setting a bad example. For all those laughing out there and snickering, we're setting a good example. We're saying, we have rules, we're gonna be governed by them, and next month, this will appear in our bylaws. What's the loss?
Commissioner Campos?
I was just gonna say that in no way, shape, or form was this amendment to the policy supposed to break the board or have this conversation, so I just wanna make it clear that it was not my intention to be, to have this be such a, a big issue. And on top of that, I would just like to say that sometimes, it's not necessarily, I hate to say that, you know, rules are meant to be broken, but, because that's not what I'm saying, but also, there's been times where this board has made decisions and in light of what is right, and I think that this is where right, this is the right thing to do.
Okay, here's what I'm gonna do to satisfy all sides. It's my prerogative to call special meetings whenever I need to, and I understand, Commissioner White, you're saying that if you would have had this for a week, you-
I absolutely would have voted for it, no question.
You would have voted for it. Well, as of May 1st, everyone would have had this good policy for a week. So, I'm gonna call a special meeting on May 1st-
I'm on it.
At, okay, that's fine. At, we'll have a quorum, four people. May 1st at 5:30 to approve this proposed amendment, Section 9, Policy 2300, with changes to the underscore type order of business. We discussed it exhaustively here. We were, we were convening this room at 5:30, May 1st, to, to move on this policy. Okay? Then we'll move on to-
I withdraw my motion then.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a statement from board governance, and we have to make sure as a body that we're doing our due diligence, and we cannot just, and I think I'm appreciating that more on some levels here, particularly because of the vastness of this district, just make, you know, decisions when we don't realize what kind of impact that they may have on other dimensions of the district. And I would just point out, I mean, I, I hope I'm not seeing a precedent here that, you know, we, we don't really think about what it is that we're doing with issues that come across this dais. That scares me, that we will begin to just haphazardly. And then, we, you know, people get these attitudes when other people are saying, "Well, we, we need to be cautious on some of these things." And even on the issue of this, when we're talking about recognizing student achievement, it scares me that we may be setting a precedent, because the, the other issue with respect to, oh, it escapes me right now, came through the government, the Senate, the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, when that should have come through board governance. We have to be real clear about our role and our responsibility, and not get into this whole notion about just haphazardly making these decisions without giving them some thought. This president, this conversation I'm hearing, it actually is scaring me. Now, you could say that it's as simple as, you know, recognizing, recognizing students, but what is the next thing that may come up, and we wanna do, be irresponsible, in my opinion, about some of these issues? I'm, I would caution my colleagues that we would want to, not, not give, give these issues that come before us forethought, and really understand the other dynamics that may come into play when we are looking at developing policy. This, this situation scares me.
Thank you. When an item is forwarded to committee, I expect to hear some type of action on it. That's the process.
Thank you.
That's the process, and that will continue to be the process. An item is forwarded to a committee, we need to have action on it. Commissioner Brennan, anything else?
Just really briefly, well, I only, the only remarks I prepared about this will take about 45 minutes, is that all right?
That's fine. You've seen Mr. Smith goes to Washington.
No, look, everybody's, there isn't anything anybody's really said here. No, look, everybody's, there isn't anything anybody's really said here that's in much conflict. Of course, we should follow the rules. We best serve children by the example we set, following rules. I'm just saying that this is, I think there's, almost by common consent, or certainly by a wide margin, the board agrees that this is an appropriate thing to do. The president does have the prerogative. It's not unreasonable to write it into the policy as well, just to reinforce it in, in the event you have a president, as we did for the past two years, who didn't believe in this and didn't do this, except for the scheduled events, you know, Black History Month, Women's History Month. So that's reasonable. And, you know, it's, it's reasonable for you to refer it to the policy committee. It's a policy change. It's reasonable that the Governance Committee would, would think they had some purview over it as well, which goes to the whole issue of the committees that we can discuss later. But, but it's, I mean, it's sort of humorous that we've had such a lengthy discussion of this, but the fact is, we all want to acknowledge and respect kids. We want to follow our rules and our procedures. It is well within our rules and procedures to suspend the rules. That's an option we have as a body, something we resort to early, but we can do it. That would be a way to, to skin this cat. But it's not, I don't think there's really that much disagreement here as, as extensive as the conversation's been. And I think we're really more on the same page than we might think.
Right. One last thought, but I got, we still have some kids in the audience, and they've been here a long time, so...
Just as a clarification, the items that I brought up that came through CIGR, those were items that there was a consensus in the committee. It is my duty as, it would be a loss if I did not bring those to the president. Notice, they were brought, they were followed the process, taken to the president. Note, there was no action besides that, and then they were referred. So I just want to make that clear, that I, that we, as a committee, have been following the process.
Definitely. And there's, there should be no illusions here. The process was definitely followed in terms of this. It was referred last meeting, was referred the policy last meeting, nothing happened in, in that, so the process was followed there. So I'm going to wrap up this conversation and bring to...
Point of clarification. Point of clarification. It's not that nothing happened. It was on the policy committee's agenda. It got no motion, it got no second.
So nothing happened?
It, it was rejected, is what happened.
Right.
Quite frankly, we could have had a motion, and then it would have been voted down.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. We'll move on to speakers on other than agenda item. We have several. Again, I want to thank these folks for their patience. I want to start with by calling Melody Gagnor, Christopher Gagnor, and then Talahita Matthews. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. Melody?
My name is Melody Gagnor. The Horses Friend program, which is directed by Matthew Doward, is a positive environment for my son and I. My son, Christopher, is bipolar and has ADHD. The program has taught him, taught my son, responsibility and respect for himself and others. No one is treated differently in this program. The Horses Friend program is a hands-on program. This is a good way for many children to learn. The children learn about horses and how to take care of them. They learn the names of the equipment they will be using when riding. It is not all about riding horses. Every Saturday, rain, snow, hot days, everyone takes a walk in the woods. This helps in childhood obesity. Last year, my son was in trouble every day and many times a day. He was in the principal's office more than in a classroom. How can you learn being in the principal's office? He felt like no one liked him and hated going to school and would fight me daily. Since my son has been in the program, my son has never been in trouble. He doesn't even know where the principal's office is. He goes to school every day and even when it was very cold, because Matt's rule is, if you don't go to school, you don't ride on Saturdays. I'm a volunteer at the program Saturday or whatever Matt needs help. I love working with my son and the horses. I thank Matt for helping me be a parent, a better parent, and a person, a better person. Probably none of these children would know anything about horses if it wasn't for Matt and his program. This program is very important to my family and my new Horses Friend family. Please let other children get the experience my son and I have gotten from this program. Please help keep our Horses Friend program alive. Help fund this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher. Melody, can you pull the mic down to Christopher so we can hear him?
Hello. My, my, my name is Christopher Gagnor. I, I, I have been in the program for one year. I have learned a lot from Matt. I love cleaning up horse manure. I love the horses help keep our pro, program going. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next up, Matthew, I'm sorry, Talahita, Talahita Matthews, I apologize if I'm saying your name wrong, followed by Matthew Doward. Matthew Doward here?
Yes.
Matthew Doward will be followed by Dan Hurst.
My name is Matthew Doward. I'm the founder and director of a Horses Friend Youth program. As you've heard some of our students describe our program, it's a very unique program. One thing that they're actually leaving out is that each and every one of the kids in our program, they actually now ride horses. But they've learned that with 10% of the time they've been in our program. The majority of the time they're in our program, excuse me, they're actually working. We're helping to build worth, that work ethic. There's a childhood obesity part of our program where we actually do a nature walk, and that happens each and every day. Some of, some of them can actually attest to it. We do it two or three times, and that's for discipline. Some of the other things that we do, we have a classroom component in our program. So kids aren't actually just coming out and riding horses. I think that first and foremost, every time someone hears about a Horses Friend, they think we're bringing kids out into the country and we're teaching them how to ride a horse. It's nothing like that. I actually would invite each and every one of you to actually come out and see exactly what these kids are doing each and every Saturday. And I actually want to thank Mrs. Michelle Hancock for actually giving our, giving us the opportunity to continue this program up until this point. The kids actually have been out there during blizzards. They've been out there during 80 and 90 degree weathers. They get up probably anywhere from 5:30 to 6 o'clock to catch a 7 o'clock bus at Freddie Thomas, and the majority of them are actually there. We do, do attendance. We've had kids actually miss a day, and their parents send them the next week with an intent, with an actual excuse. You know, some kids might have been out of town, something that they didn't even have to do. Some of them actually, have actually even come back during a weekday and made up the day that they've missed. So it's something that they actually love. Last Saturday, I kept some students over after the program was done and actually drove them back home. I think it was 80, 80, close to 85 degrees on last Saturday. It was, it was just unbelievable, driving back into the city and seeing where I had to take these kids back to, after being outside in the country, just grass and, you know, just green and fresh air. Now they had to go back into the city. Our program isn't going to take that away from them, but it is going to give them the opportunity to see there's a different way of life, and they can actually achieve that if they want to. One of the, one of the young ladies actually spoke earlier about equestrian. That's a type of riding. The majority of kids in the city of Rochester will never even know that. They won't know that they can actually become a vet, an equine dentist, a chiropractor, a ferret, which takes care of horses' feet. These are all careers. People make great deal of money doing this. So if you actually give us the opportunity to actually continue this program, I might have some of those people actually taking care of my horses one day. Another thing is, we've been given the opportunity now to be a part of Monroe County Community Service. Department of Probation is actually trying to implement our program in their, into their office. By, by the use of horses, we can change personalities, and we're working with gangs, truancy, different things as, as such as that. So by giving the opportunity for anybody to actually be around any kind of animal, you can make a difference and you can make a change. So that's all we're actually here today, is give us the opportunity, come out and see exactly what these kids are doing, and we'll go from there. Actually, we'll be at Baden Street on Saturday from 11 to 2, and you'll have the opportunity to come out and see what the kids are doing there.
Thank you. Mr. Doward?
Mr. President?
Were you, were you, were you at the Earl Street Block Club?
Yes.
Ah, that was me.
Dan, Dan Hurst?
And while he's coming, Mr. President, I, we, we had the horse, I think, there last Friday as well, and so the horses are in the inner city, in the hood.
Did you ride?
And, and, you know, it's a program that we've had at Baden a number of times, and the kids in the community absolutely love it.
Thank you. Dan?
First, I asked the board to recognize the students that have sat here so quietly. Hi, my name is Dan Hurst. Violence, gangs, troubled youth. Pick up a newspaper, turn on the news, surf the web, and these problems of violence, gangs, and kids in trouble seem to be some of the nation's worst plagues. Here in Rochester, these same issues make up a large part of the daily news. So how do we, as a community, change this? So what can you, the board, do about it? Well, let me tell you about one small program that's making a huge dent in these problems. A Horses Friend. A Horses Friend can change a child's perspective on life. A Horses Friend can take a quiet, almost autistic child and make him a leader of his peers, excuse me, who has no problem expressing himself. A Horses Friend can save a mom from having to go see her son's teacher each week because he no longer is causing trouble at school. A Horses Friend can make a young girl proud of herself, raise her self-esteem because she found she had the ability to get on that horse and ride that horse all by herself. How do I know a Horses Friend can do this? I have witnessed these things over the last year or so, volunteering with this wonderful program. Kids of all ages have passed through our program and have started out defensive, withdrawn, and shy. Some of you on the board remember, I think last time I was here, I mentioned that my job, when they get off the bus the first time, is to step in the poop, show them that it won't hurt them. Most, if not all, spend six Saturday mornings with us and leave with newfound abilities. The ability to succeed, the ability to make new friends, even if they look or act different, the ability to follow through with a task to completion, the ability to see beyond the life they know in the city, and many more. Many of these wonderful kids have come out after school and on vacation time to help with the horses, to clean the stalls, to move mountains of manure, and to be just out in the country, all on their own time and by their own choice. When you see firsthand the awestruck looks on these kids' faces as they first see the horses, as they touch a horse for the first time, as they get on the horse, as they bond with their own horse, you believe there's a chance for them. You believe that the violence, the gangs, the troubles they deal with on a daily basis can be overcome. All they need is a chance. Excuse me. I urge all the members of this board and all the members of the community that care about our children to come out and see our program and believe for yourselves. Thank you.
Rebecca, Rebecca Woodard, followed by Richard Gerbasi.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. I too am a volunteer with this organization, and I just needed to let you know how important it is that we keep this a part of these children's lives. I ask myself, you know, where do children get role models right these days? You know, where do they come from? Who are they? What should they be? Strong, diligent, caring, innovative, and passionate. These are the traits of the founder of this program. I think every child deserves to have a model, role model like that. I think every parent wants to have, or have their children have role models like that. As everyone here is aware, we have an alarming violence rate amongst our youth, and graduation rates are equally troubling. It is time for something different here in Rochester. The traditional programs currently offered to children are not working. This opinion is coming from significant sources we've spoken to over the last year. Police officers, anti-violence leaders, teachers, principals, parents, probation officers, and pediatric surgeons that deal with the aftermath of violence in the city. We have their support now, we'd like yours. I stand before you here tonight to say that a Horses Friend would like to be a long-term partner with the City School District. While programs like a Horses Friend are quite innovative here in Rochester, there's nothing new in other parts of, it's nothing new in other parts of the country. There's programs like this in New York City, Chicago, and LA. The model works. It has been proven, it has been tested, it has been measured. As we are asking you, that representatives of Rochester's children, is to open yourself to the possibility that this can be the next model for the City School District. We have a tremendous, we've had a tremendous 2007, 2008 school year already, and attendance rates for us run 75% and up, while a lot of other programs and people we've talked to are running at about 25%. We think this is significant. A Horses Friend not only provides a place for children to just be children, but children to be safe, inspired, productive, and successful. They are put into a situation, no matter where they come from, what they look like, what school they go to, they have to become a team to accomplish a goal. In the meantime, what happens is something wonderful. They bond with an animal, they bond with each other, and they begin to see the world in a different way. I think one young girl who spent about a year with us in one of her last essays before she moved on to something more important, and to her at that time in her life, she explained what a Horses Friend had done for her. She said that it gave, it gave her the opportunity to start thinking about her future. We need to see these children every day, not just once a week on Saturdays. We'd like to see them every single day after school and, and keep them with us for as long as we possibly can. We want to expand our services to all children who want to be part of a Horses Friend. We want to be part of a long-term solution to change the tide of statistics current, that are currently happening. We stand before you, sharing our passion for the program, our dedication to make it work, and the promise to make a difference in Rochester's youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woodard. Richard, Richard Gerbasi, followed by Carol Lurie.
Good evening. I don't have a prepared speech. I'm usually better off the top of my head. But my name is Richard Gerbasi. I am a volunteer on weekends at Horses Friend. And then for, I guess, my day job, I'm vice president of the Humane Society at Lollipop Farm. So I'm very acquainted with the, the strengths to the animal-human bond. And I took a brief chance to go through, actually, a plethora of programs that are available throughout the country that are animal-related with learning and working with children, and found many common strings through there, that such things as, a number of these programs are teaching at-risk youths about patience, self-control, non-physical problem-solving, and a philosophy of living that relies on a kindness rather than force. The students improve such living skills as assertiveness, staying on task, communication, increased confidence, reduced stress, commitment. The goal, bonds the children to each other, supportive adults, animals, and nature, break the cycle of violence by providing a safe and structured living environment for troubled youths by reintegrating these children. A model program to teach gentleness and nonviolent resolution of conflicts to at-risk children and families through animal care in non-threatening environments. Students gain self-control, self-esteem, empathy, patience, and a sense of responsibility. The ability, a very, a therapeutic horse, the ability to ride and care for a horse is a tremendous confidence builder. Children in this 10-week program feel they have gained control, not only over the horses, but also over their own lives. Another program that incorporates through reading has proven decreased absenteeism, improved self-confidence and self-esteem, a sense of pride in their accomplishments, involvement in other school and activities. Yes, this is what we want to see for our children. And what I have seen, I've been a volunteer out there now since August of 2007. I've seen such growth in these children, as, as they have asked, we need to get you to come out and see these kids. They're wonderful kids. A lot of these kids are considered at-risk. They're at risk because if we don't care and if we don't do something, we'll lose them. This is a positive program. There's, what they didn't mention was, we also turn around and we create mentors for these kids, from other kids that have been involved in the program. These kids are invited back now for $30 for six weeks to come back and volunteer and act as mentors. That $30 allows us to provide for them a breakfast and a lunch. That's $5 a week, not asking much from the family. But we need the support of the school districts. I brought this program, I'm, I'm part of the Project Exile Advisory Committee. I brought this group there to that because I think this can have a true impact on the problems that we're seeing in the city, the gangs, the violence. This is our opportunity, and we hope that you'll support us.
Thank you. Carol... Carol Lurie, followed by Lori Thomas.
Hi, my name is Carol Lurie. I'm also a volunteer. And I brought you kind of a photo package of what we do. And hopefully you can catch it. When you take a look at the pictures, notice when you see the horses out in the wild, the spacing that the children have accomplished on their ride. Here. This is not a-- this is a pretty high-level skill. And it takes self-control, it takes-- hope you have the strength, distance. Check out the classroom. Check out-- when you see a young man and woman together leaving a horse, you're not seeing over-sexualized behavior. You're not seeing poor boundaries. Look at the level of relaxation of Eric. Where is he? Right. Look at this. Wouldn't you want that for your kids? Wouldn't you want to see that in school? Look at Brooklyn in the classroom. I did not ask them to pose for this. And look at this horse. Would you approach that without some fear?
Yes.
And look at this guy. I mean, this is one day. This is mad everywhere you look. I don't have that energy. I don't have the money to own a horse. We don't need a civilization that has a horse, if you can afford it, a pool, if you can afford it. We need to come together and give the children what they need to be well. And I'm sorry. The children kind of underestimated what they do. They get up in the pitch darkness. Sometimes it's 12 o'clock. They put on three pair of jeans. They put on three pair of shirts. They walk past the TV before the cartoons are on. They go through the living room without the controller being out. Thank you. And they come here, and they deal with cold. I mean, sometimes they even cry. But they have a commitment to care for the horses and to be there for each other. And I believe that they are becoming less anxious and more confident, and that they realize that they are doing something that others may not be doing, and that they have their sights set on something. And I believe that these children have distinguished themselves in this way through not necessarily opportunity, but how they utilize that opportunity and the skill set that they develop by getting up in the morning, by responding to adults, by going into situations which they may initially fear, but collect enough information and guidance for them to go into those situations and walk away with a sense of mastery. And I think that these are the behaviors that will make them popular to college entrance committees, that make teachers smile, and that make parents happy. And I think that sometimes-- and I'm sorry, I'm very nervous speaking-- but I think sometimes in order to really address violence, we really need to know peace. And I think that the joy that the children feel is very important to their parents, and that the work that parents do is very difficult. And we have, I think, a role for parents. A lot of the parents are out hiking with us now. They're concerned about their health. They're concerned about being there for their children because of their own health. And I just think that this is a way to kind of give families an opportunity to be happier and to develop skills that support children's success and for children to broaden their horizons and learn to face challenges that are really worth-- you know, worth facing. So I appreciate you--
Thank you.
--for supporting and listening to us.
And I'll tell you, this is the first time we ever had horses being presented to us on the day, so thank you. Last speaker, Lori Thomas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Bressard, community members. I'm very distressed this evening at the very thought of this budget being approved by the board. Superintendent Bressard, I understand that you have little, if anything, to do with the current proposed budget. However, the fact that our children are failing at an alarming rate while adults that have nothing to do with the educational process of our children are being paid at an even more alarming rate, it's unconscionable. The proposed budget of the Rochester City School District is an enormous $684 million. Broken down by the number of students we serve, which is approximately 17,000, it would actually be less expensive for taxpayers to disable the district and pay for each individual child in Rochester to attend a local private school where they would receive an excellent education. Yet, with the $40,000 per student funding this district receives from taxpayers, we graduate less than 50% of our children. I read this budget from cover to cover, yet I saw no line items that include experiential field study monies. Teachers who want to provide their students with the experiences of Cummings Nature Center, A Horse's Friend, Gannanigan Nature Reserve, a trip down the Erie Canal, or a day at Genesee Country Museum must beg, borrow, and steal to obtain entrance fees and busing fees. Working in the poorest neighborhoods in this city, I have to ask parents for $8 so that their children may see an exhibit at the Rochester Museum and Science Center or the Planetarium. To expose our students to the wonderful works of Art of Memorial Art Gallery will cost parents another $8. And while I'm close enough to walk to the Strong Museum, I have to ask for $7 for the entrance fee, which does not include the Butterfly Museum. How many trips can an impoverished parent afford for their child? Breaking down the proposed budget, teachers earn, on average, $56,000 in salary. Using the same formula, our legal counsel receives, on average, $131,276. And the proposed budget will afford them an 8.18% increase, while teachers will receive a 4.13% increase. The early childhood budget will be decreased by 7.55%. Supplies and materials will be reduced $111,837. And instructional supplies will be reduced $890,836. How can this board, in all good conscience, read the figures in this book, understanding that our children are being educationally murdered by a lack of resources and materials, and give themselves, administrators, and especially legal counsel, an increase in salary? I charge you, ladies and gentlemen of the board, be righteous in your dealings with men. Suffer not the little children. Become an example of integrity for our community. Do not pass the budget unless it reflects the concentration of monies on the areas of need that will constitute the educational success of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our speakers for the evening. I will now-- I want to announce a couple announcements for the next meeting. Obviously, there will be a meeting next Thursday at 5:30. We'll take up this policy proposal and also convene an executive session to hear appeals on long-term suspension. Special meeting adoption, May 8th, 6 o'clock PM, to adopt the board budget. There's a public hearing for '08-'09 Code of Conduct, May 12th, 2008, at 6:00 PM. And there's a board business meeting, May 22nd, 2008, at 6:30 PM. You also can always refer to the board's webpage, for additional meeting information. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move?
Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Campos. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourn. Thank you.
You're going into adjourn session?
No.